All right. Good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, April tenth. Gary, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comment?
Sure.
I'd just like to make a request.
You need to stand up, and even though we know who you are, Mike, you need to tell us.
Mike Irvin, I'd just like to make a request of the commissioners today that there's a couple of items on the agenda that I'm not really familiar with. So I'd like to hear the presentations and then possibly make comment afterwards.
And remember, we change it. You can make comment during the discussion of the item.
Well, as I-
That's during the meeting.
Yeah.
But this is a work session, so we only allow fire and-
Sorry, Mike, okay. I'm trying to let you talk, but they-
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, I don't have any problem with it if, if somebody. I mean, I don't, again, I don't think, this isn't the place for, you know, hours and hours of testimony, but you know, if we need a few minutes, I'm-
Okay, thank you.
All right. The Budget Committee, looks like this one falls under you, Andy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, you have, in your packet, the resumes, I believe, of four, or applications of four individuals that had submitted for the Budget Committee. The finance staff have completed a review of those applicants. That is also attached, the scoring there. I believe there's a fifth applicant that Christina had planned to interview, whether that's taking place or not. I'm not up to date on that. But Christina is, as Sarah mentioned, available online and can address any questions you might have about this. But at the end of the day, what we would need from you, whether we do that at today's meeting, or we do that at the April seventeenth Board Meeting, is to appoint three individuals as provided in the order in front of you.
And I just spoke with Jamie, but I do have one request that on the Budget Committee candidate interview scoring, that it's Bobby Cooks that was in here, and her name is Bobby Brooks.
Thank you.
Is that the person that they didn't get the interview with? Because I don't see that name on this candidate here.
She was, she is, was on the Budget Committee.
They were recommending Steve Kakers.
Oh, okay, okay. That's why I was gonna say, that's just kind of a new, okay, perfect. I make a motion to accept the Budget Committee as, as president.
Second, any discussion?
I can make a motion right now. We're in work session. I'm always in trouble there.
Oh, I mean, I think it's okay.
Or do I put it to the consent agenda? Is that the proper motion?
Let's just roll it to-
I make a motion to put this on the consent agenda. I just remembered, I'm not at county court, I'm at a work session.
I thought that we were wanting to get this one done, so that's why I agreed with it.
Yeah, that's fine, either, either way, you're true.
I would just say move the, the slate of people that the Budget Committees, the, the finance departments kind of recommended.
Then I'll just move that we go ahead and approve it, I guess, if that's what we're gonna do. Do you wanna do-
They said it's fine if we wait till the seventeenth.
Okay, okay, for consent agenda.
Yeah, and I don't think we need an actual motion to do that. We can just say-
Okay, okay. I'm always in trouble on motions, so I'm trying to get better.
Well, it's a little misleading, because we do have an order already approved for it, so. Yes.
All right. Human Resource Roadmap?
Yes, this particular item provides a strategic roadmap for the Human Resources Department. As you're aware, several departments have recently or in the process of completing department assessment strategic plans. These include Finance, the Sheriff's Office, IT Community Development, the Road Department, which is a TSP, Transportation System Plan, the Library, the Fairgrounds, the Museum, and Facilities, now Human Resources. The attached report in your packet provides an assessment of the status of the HR operation on a countywide basis and a roadmap to guide the organization to reach the desired state. We have hired the, consistent with that roadmap, we've already moved forward with hiring the third HR staff person, and we've contracted for professional services to manage the HR Information System project. We are in progress of completing the other activities noted in the third quarter outline and have the other activities scheduled as shown in that summary or quarterly activities. You have Mark Weimester and Carol Whiteside, consultants with VIE Consultants that are online, and I think have a brief presentation to you for this item.
Thanks, Andy. Yeah, we have the, the entire roadmap document is in your packet. This on the screen is a brief summary of it that Carol, my partner, is gonna go over. Just really quick, Virtual Information Executives is a small boutique consulting firm out of Portland. We are all former C-level executives in various professions. And we, we have the company with the IT roadmap last year, so we were familiar with a lot of the county things going on. So Carol, do you wanna take it away?
For those of you who have actually read the whole report, I commend you. I think it's a lot of detail that may not be totally relevant to this level of decision-making, but it is there for you to review. Now, we were asked to do this review in part to prepare for a new Human Resources Information System, an HRIS. So during February, we interviewed the HR folks, all county department heads, and some additional staff for a total of twenty-eight interviews. What we found was that people had very different expectations for HR based on what their needs were in their department, or what their experience had been with other HR departments. So it was a little bit of a challenge to tie down exactly what the county should be looking for. And remember, for HR was a small group for years and responded to almost a dozen managers who were asking for different things, or doing things their own way, or figuring out ways to get things done that are HR-related. I think now the county is moving into a situation where HR can be much more constructive and helpful, and be more uniform across all of the different departments. Because recruiting is challenging for every department, and clearly there needs to be collaboration between an HR group and the individual departments to tune exactly what is needed. But at this point, there are few documented procedures or few ways of saying, this is the way the county wants it done. And we think that's an important step that's gonna have to go on. Probably simultaneously with the implementation of the HR system, because you don't wanna stop either one to slow down the other. It wasn't clear that HR even had the authority or responsibility to define those consistent procedures in the past either. So we think the whole county's at a new point and ready to move forward. Now, when you have a new computer system, it can make things easier, clearer, more accessible, and more consistent. But if there hasn't been thought given to what the county really wants, you end up implementing what the system has and kind of going with it, whether it works or not. So we want to be sure that the HR team, the county department heads, and the head of the HRIS system implementation are very careful about figuring out what you want and how it needs to work, and documenting that first, before you just take the whole system as it's given. Now, you don't have time to reinvent it, but there is time to think through what is important. So in the report, there's a great deal of detail, so that there's options at every point of what things can be, how things can be done. And we don't mean the report to be the final word. For example, there is a set of metrics, possible quality measures for whether HR is doing what the county needs. It's not so much whether HR is doing its job, that is, getting positions posted, for example, but whether that position posting is getting you the right recruits, getting people on board who stay on board and who contribute to the county. Those kinds of metrics are really important, and they're difficult to implement without some data or information, and also some clear goals and the ways you're gonna measure against those goals. So this is a major project for HR, and we're hoping that the roadmap with its major milestones for those events can help move forward in terms of implementing that system, and also documenting, confirming what needs to happen for the county, so that HR is truly a service, and can provide those services in a solid and quality way. Now, Mark and I are now making sure that we are available for questions both here and any other time. So at this point, I'm done with my summary, and we're open to questions.
I just wanna compliment you. I think HR, that we had a, a long way to go. I read your roadmap, I read your summary, and I feel we are on the right path, and I thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you know, I will, I will go along with everything that Suzie said, and, you know, I'm appreciative of the way and the direction that, you know, our department heads and those have, are supported it and want to move forward. Because I think that, you know, we, we have a ways to go, and we're kind of taking baby steps and learning, and to now have, you know, the supervision and a direction, and the help to make us go there, I think it's great. So I appreciate what you're doing.
Thanks. Yeah, no, I'm excited too. I just think we need to make sure that while we, as we go through this, we make sure that we bring everybody with us, that we don't leave anybody behind. I think that would be my biggest concern, is that people in general don't like change, but people in County like change even less. So I think we just need to make sure that we're making sure that everybody's comfortable before we make any major changes. Anything else?
That's one of the reasons we stressed collaboration as one of the goals of the whole project, not just get it done, get it documented, but make sure everybody's on board.
Totally agree. Anything else?
Yeah, yeah, the, just a little bit of feedback, and yeah, thank you, Mark and Carol, for, you know, the work you've done on this. And this is, there's a lot of, as you saw in that report, a lot of information, a lot to follow, a lot of guidance and so forth. And we've reached out, and, you know, not only with those interviews that they conducted, you know, twenty-eight, as they mentioned, but there's a group of, I believe, six different departments represented from, representing about eighty percent of the employees within the organization, from all levels within the organization, collaborating to go through the evaluation of the different vendors that have responded to the county's RFP, they're meeting with the subject matter experts, and, you know, coordinated with the project manager, and they are tasked with going back to their department and showing and talking and helping, call it, sell, you know, what is ultimately gonna be done. So there's a recognition, I think, by those folks, and, you know, the brief conversations I've had with them, that in a lot of ways, it's overwhelming, so much to take in, and it's real tempting to do what is the easy thing to do, which is to do nothing. And, but that's not where we're at. It's a major investment of time and a major investment of county dollars and resources. You know, to get this done, it's gonna, you know, we're not rushing this by any means. You know, this was budgeted originally over a fiscal year ago, and it is now, you know, in the process of, you know, moving towards a decision to acquire an application, and then lay out a plan to ultimately be able to implement that application. And, you know, that may take twelve months, may take eighteen months, but incremental baby steps, you know, to Commissioner Barney's comment, I think, you know, each day we'll, you know, see an improvement to that. And, you know, I think a comment that was made the other day is, you know, there will be a need for, you know, staff of the younger generation that is showing a person of my generation how to ultimately do some of this stuff. Those folks will ultimately retire, and there will be a new generation that has, where this stuff is just all second nature, and, you know, how to bridge that gap and do it in a way that is respectful and helping to accomplish it. But, you know, as, you know, Carol mentioned, it is hard to manage something when you don't have information to help manage it. And, you know, we are lacking in every respect in the HR world for that. Yeah, so this will be a huge improvement to the organization.
Great. Thank you, Andy, for being instrumental in getting this roadmap started.
All right. Number three, I, I'd like to push this off until a couple of weeks, because I think we've got a lot of things working right now that we need to work through before we make these decisions.
I agree. I, Sarah indicated on the seventeenth, we don't have a lot of stuff, and I think we need to, I think we need to study the committees. I'm concerned about the committees, I'm concerned about our description. So I agree, I'd like to spend way more time with this, so I'd like to push it off. If the seventeenth looks good and not, I, I think we need to spend a lot of time and go through this and be very careful about what we do. Whether, like I say, she said the seventeenth, we don't have a lot, is that the place to fit? Is it the place to fit the next week? We'll just see as our agenda, but I do totally agree on that.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine with it. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I do.
With a lot of things.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff on the plate and I really think we need to spend some time, particularly in the committee part and all of that.
Yeah, the one thing that I would, you know, ask you is if there is interest in the ability to appoint one of you to the COAC board. They do have a meeting tomorrow, um, April eleventh, three to five.
And is someone currently serving on the COAC board?
Not from Creek County.
Not from Creek County. Okay.
That was, Jerry was on that.
Yeah, that's kind of on that transportation thing that you.
Oh, it's okay, which quite frankly, yesterday I got a call from Patty Adair on that. So I'm assuming that maybe I need to be there tomorrow between three and five. Is that where I?
That's I think where we're headed.
Okay, well.
There are, there are a couple of things in here that are kind of pressing, but is that?
Yeah. Called me and yes, and I actually acted on a signature on something. So, okay, I guess I'm tomorrow from three to five. And when we come back on committees, I may complain, who knows?
Yeah, there was that, uh, committee from COIC for that communication, COAC. And then there was also this regional housing council, uh, that is, uh, formed up. And again, the ideal scenario from a Creek County perspective, I think for, from their perspective would be to have a Creek County commissioner on that committee.
Yeah, I said I'd, I'd jump on there. When is that?
I will say this, Seth, I was part of the CYC emergency meeting on Friday. Not that I want another thing, but we were the ones that developed this. And this is why this is coming forward. So I'm not sure whether in continuity, not that I want another committee. I'm not sure in continuity that maybe I should stay with this because I was with the stakeholders here. And we did a meeting, I don't remember, from three to whatever. So that is my only thought about that and I met with Tammy. So when is this? I mean, let me see if I can even do this, but when is the meeting?
Yeah, that meeting wasn't as condensed or, you know, as timely as the other meeting and I'm.
And I can always call Tammy and talk to her and.
Yeah, that, that was our emergency meeting. This has been brought forth by Tony DeBonne. Like I say, I was on the steering because this is what COIC has decided that we need to move forward with. Like I say, I'm not really quite sure, but when is that?
This meeting meets the third Monday of the month from five to six thirty at Redmond City Hall.
Okay. From five to six thirty?
Eight, it'd be the fifteenth, the next Monday.
Okay, we'll talk about it and figure it out. Cause let me look at.
I'm available.
And then the Oregon Broadband Advisory Council, I got that email and I threw that in there. But again, that's a thing that we have to apply for. And so that was thrown in. I don't think that says emergency because we don't have to apply till May first. But I went ahead and gave it to Sarah to put it on this.
All right, anything else?
Nope, not on that.
Well, the only other thing is I also am going to pick up the NHMP steering committee. That coincides with the CWPP steering committee.
A lot of letters.
Oh, don't ask me.
Which I.
One is a national hazard mitigation and the other one is the, um, they'll come to me in a minute, um.
I think it's the community wildfire.
Yes, exactly.
See, that was on my list for some reason, which I am very happy to white out.
Yeah, it was on everybody's list, but I.
Okay, I didn't look at your list. I looked at mine and I thought, oh, good gosh. Okay, perfect.
So that's, that's why, you know, we've got the immediate ones. Now we can go back and review these, make changes.
And we really do. And because some of them, they're, they're acronyms. I'm still learning them. So, yeah, perfect, perfect. I'm very glad I can cross something out, Brian. You've made me happy today. I've added one, but I'm, I'm getting there.
All right.
We're not on the land, we're not on the landfill yet. We're on Brad.
Cheer up, Brad.
Brad's the cheap guy.
Morning, Commissioner. Brad Haynes, Road Department. Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Brad Haynes, Creek County Road Department. I'm here to, um, request a purchase of a work pickup from Kendall Ford with the three beds that we have from, uh, other competitors throughout the county or throughout the.
Can you guys hear him out back? Not very. You're getting, Brad, you gotta hold it like, take it out and just.
Gotta be like a rock star.
Yeah.
I am not a rock star.
Yes, you are.
No idea.
We've, uh, uh, got three bids from competing competitor, uh, dealerships throughout the central Oregon area. Um, Kendall Ford came in at the low bid of fifty-two, nine forty-nine, sixty-five. We're replacing a two thousand and one, uh, work pickup that has roughly a hundred and seventy-four thousand miles on it. With the, uh, miles, uh, converted to hours, it has it roughly about three hundred and fifty-seven thousand miles or hours on it. And so we're replacing that, moving a flaggers pickup down to that work truck and replacing that flagger pickup is what this is for.
Does it still run?
Yes.
So.
Barely.
If facilities need to pick up, we could maybe work out something there.
Yes, it does have some possible engine problems with it, but it is, does run, yes.
Well, maybe we don't want it then.
Maybe you don't.
Is it worth anything? I mean, can we put it in as a trade-in if it's not worth to pass on?
It's pretty, it's pretty well-used up interior-wise and stuff, so it's going to be a pretty low value in a trade-in or some, on an auction sale.
But to Brian's point then is, how long do you think the engine will, I mean, could it, could it be used in facilities? I guess since they don't.
It could be repurposed in the facilities, uh, possibly, uh, but we don't know how long the, the problem with the engine could last. You know, it could last a week, it could last a day. So.
Is, is it computerized? Can we, can we fix it or it's got the computer thing in it?
It could probably, I'd have to talk to the fleet, the mechanics or technicians to see what needs to be done on it. Or maybe it needs a new engine or something like that. It is, it's a two thousand and one.
Yeah. It's pretty tuckered.
So maybe we just hang a sign on it and buy at risk.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we need a, can we put this on the consent agenda or how do we work it?
Yeah.
Okay, can I, I'll make a motion to put it on the consent. We don't, okay, well, see, I'm always in trouble on motions. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
You look cheap now for the next one.
All right, Jackie. So you're online there.
Good morning. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Perfect.
All right, so Jackie Davis, Creek County landfill. Um, we are looking for approval to order a new water truck for the landfill. Our current water truck is a nineteen seventy-nine Mack. Uh, we use this water truck for fire suppression and dust control. Um, in our budget for twenty twenty-five, we have set aside two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in capital for this purchase. Uh, with vehicles being approximately a year or more out, we're looking to pre-order now and then disperse funds in twenty twenty-five. Um, I worked with Eric in legal and we were able to purchase the, or are able to purchase the chassis under the Oregon Purchase Agreement, which is a twenty twenty-five international for a hundred and thirty-six thousand. This was also the low bid that we got on the truck portion of the order. Then we went out and got three quotes for the tank. Um, we got quotes back from Omco for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Klein Tanks in California for a hundred and one thousand dollars and Smith Equipment for forty-three thousand dollars. And our, the one that we feel is the best value, it meets all the specs that we asked for is the Omco tank. We realize that that is the highest price on the table. Um, but for Klein Tanks, we would have to get the truck down to California and then have the tank put on. Parts for that tank would be more expensive. So we kicked that one out. Smith Equipment is asking for twenty percent down and they don't meet all of our specs. So if you agree, we'd like to purchase the twenty twenty-five international chassis with the Omco water tank. It would be a total of two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And that would still put us under budget twenty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Jackie, I'm curious on Smiths. Why were they not meeting the requirements? What was not met?
Okay, so I have Aaron Reinhardt here, the mechanic for the landfill, so he'll give you some more information on that.
Great, thank you.
Part of that, Brian, is the, um, Omco has a off-road type, uh, it's the XH, XHD severe duty since, um, on the tank. So it allows like a three-point to where it can actually articulate without flexing the tank or the frame on that. Um, the other part is it didn't have a gravity bar uh, for the roads and stuff and then it didn't, the pump sizes were smaller. So for, you know, fire and mostly, you know, is where we need the bigger pumps just so we can have, uh, more water.
Sure, no, I understand. Yeah, I, I agree with you, especially on the tank and the stability and that. All right, thank you, Aaron.
You're welcome.
No, thank you, Aaron, very much. I, they're expensive, that's for sure.
Yep, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
I didn't make a motion this time. I was good.
Casey?
Good morning, Casey Daly from the Fairgrounds. Um, in your packet this morning, we have, uh, three bids for, to add forty additional pens to our stock to accommodate the growing of 4H and FFA programs. Um, we recommend the, the Wilco bid, which is the low bid. In addition, it is, uh, the same pens that Dan McNerish Group, uh, purchased last year at fair. So we'll be able to actually interconnect these pens when we, uh, when we're setting things up. So we'd ask for that consideration.
Makes sense to me.
Yep.
Yep, it's only growing, isn't it, Casey?
It is. We have, uh, have a, quite a group this year, so we look forward to seeing everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
Thank you, Casey.
Kelly?
Morning, Kelly Coffield, Airport Manager. Um, so what I'm looking for is approval and a signature for a intergovernmental agreement contract with the Oregon Department of Forestry. It's the same, basically the same contract I've been doing with the, uh, Department of Forestry the past five or six years. Um, so the single-engine air tankers lease a section of our ramp parking for the summer. Um, basically April or April, May, June is when they start, depending on fire, when fire season starts. And it goes through October. Um, so I've had, um, John Isler reviewed the contract. Um, he, he should be, should be in your packet, so I don't know if you have any questions on that.
Yeah, it's in here and I don't have any questions and I understand what it is and
It is a.
Probably supportive of continuing it.
Yeah, it's a revenue generator, big revenue generator. And of course it supports the surrounding area for fire support.
Absolutely, it's a great deal.
Yeah, it's a good, really good thing for our community.
Okay, so my hope was to put it, um, rule for the consent agenda. Okay.
Good thing you made that motion, Kelly.
Yes.
Quite frankly, if, if you wouldn't have educated me when I read this, I wouldn't have understood everything. So thank you for my tour and education.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
So, so those that don't know, Kelly is the department head at the airport and we've had some good things in the last several years. One of them is the heli base and, and then what we're assigning today to continue the service. And, um, with that heli base, um, was a good thing for the Sheriff's Department because the Sheriff's Department got the whole facility that the BLM was in. And the BLM just gave it to the county or the Sheriff's Department. And so we've.
I think it was a dollar.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah. It's been, you know, very helpful for the Sheriff's Department is where their search and rescue and things are and so things are moving along.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, emergency support, obviously, and with the Forest Service space and the Oregon Department of Forestry, it just, um, seems to be growing through the years. And so that's a huge amount of support for the, uh, surrounding area. So hopefully it'll keep going.
All right, Tim is up. So they want to turn our, all of our public lands into solar lands, huh?
Good, good morning. Uh, yes, so what I'm here today is just sort of to give you a heads up of some activity of your, uh, Natural Resources Advisory Committee. Um, in this particular topic, um, over a year ago, the BLM at the national level uh, announced a, uh, process to expand, uh, what they call their programmatic, uh, plan for large-scale commercial development on public lands. Uh, that plan adopted by BLM in twenty twelve uh, covered the states of California, Nevada, Arizona, New Mexico and Utah and Colorado. Under this proposal, uh, additional states will be added, Oregon, Washington, Idaho, Montana and Wyoming. Um, also in this update, uh, they are proposing new guidelines to guide their agency in the citing of these large-scale commercial solar facilities. Um, they are re, they, in their draft, NIPA proposed five alternatives. Um, everything from kind of no holds barred, all public lands are open for this kind of development uh, to a very narrow focused, uh, will only cite, uh, these kind of projects on very disturbed lands, uh, within a very short distance of existing, uh, transmission lines. So, uh, last summer, uh, through the advisory committee, the court did respond, uh, to the scoping process of this NIPA review for BLM. Uh, and you outlines lots of concerns in that scoping letter. Uh, at the March meeting, uh, so last month, uh, the advisory committee, uh, really had a, uh, sort of heartfelt discussion about uh, responding to, excuse me, this, uh, draft NIPA document. Uh, primarily because it's a, it's a, like a thirty thousand foot elevation review of, of what BLM might do. Uh, recognizing that if a large-scale commercial solar project were to be proposed, say in the Prineville BLM district, uh, the Prineville BLM district would still be required to go through a very lengthy, uh, EIS review for that particular application. So this document will provide some guidance. But BLM still would have to do something very much local. And really commenting on what that very much local impact might be is really kind of where your strength would lie in, in guiding some activity. On the other hand, they also felt that even though it was a thirty thousand foot view, it was important to let the BLM, uh, hear Creek County's voice, uh, to let the BLM know that in. Uh, to let the BLM know that in the, and Cook County's particular example. Uh, you have a natural resources policy which kind of guides how you comment and. And where you kind of think these things might lie uh, for the benefits of the residents of Cook County and the maintaining the custom and culture. And so ultimately, they decided they would take a deep dive into that uh, EIS and. Draft some comments uh, for your hopeful adoption and review. The reason I'm here today is because this afternoon is when the committee will uh, review their draft. Uh, but in order to sort of kind of get it on your schedule for next week, uh, Juan wanted to give you, and you have it in your packet. Sort of the draft. Of what they're going to talk about this afternoon, uh, so if you have any thoughts, concerns, additions, changes. Uh, that you want the committee to discuss this afternoon, uh, certainly would. Take those thoughts and and whatnot to that meeting this afternoon. But just to really uh, to give you kind of the, here's what they're thinking. Uh, we're going to come with to you for something next Wednesday, uh, the deadline for comment is Thursday, the eighteenth. Uh, you think that's kind of short notice, well, this is actually the longest notice. And opportunity we've ever had to participate in one of these things, usually we only have thirty days and. The way they announce and the deadlines, you know, the committee doesn't have time in many cases to do a deep dive and. You guys don't really have a good chance to to contemplate what we might do, but in this particular case. The, the moon is aligned just perfectly and while we didn't get much of a solar impact the other day, we. You know, we actually can. Have a a comment here that might be meaningful, so that's really why I'm here today, uh. If you've had a chance to review that letter, and again, like I said, if you uh, have any thoughts you want me to carry back, I will. If you want to attend that meeting today, it is a public meeting of the Advisory Committee. Uh, starts at one o'clock and we're meeting at the COC uh, Cook County Open Campus Building, so. I think I sent it to him all.
Yeah, I I read the letter, Jim, and I think I wrote back to you on my many emails that I really liked your letter, I agreed with your letter. And unless life derails me, I'll be there today.
Yeah, so.
One for your meeting.
I give credit where credit is due, the subcommittee of the Natural Resource Committee actually put this together. Uh, if I can, I won't forget who all is on that subcommittee, it's Cliff Kaiser, he's the chair. Uh, Calista Songstad, uh, Mike Lund, uh, Melinda Kessler and Lynn Breeze. Are the folks that took their time to. Deep dive into that document and come up with some thoughtful and hopeful impactful comments.
They did a good job, they did a really good job.
Yeah, Tim, I read your letter that you sent out to us and I'm I'm great with it and appreciate the work that's going into it. I I have some, you know, hesitance about. The federal government and leasing out property for solar. You know, believe that they need to be in that business. I think there is other uses for uh, natural resources.
That's, I think, the tone of this letter.
Yep.
Let's do it.
Yep.
I agree, totally. I guess I am for the letter and everything you put in there.
Does it, does it talk about the um. The fact that we do have a lot of permits, cattle permits near power lines and different assets that we use.
Yeah, I think what it it mentions is that the draft EIS. Uh, really fails to talk about the impacts of those developments. On things like grazing allotments, recreational opportunities, uh, wildlife migration. Uh, threatened and endangered plants and critters. Uh, because again, this is west-wide, uh, you know, we're focused on, of course, its impacts on Cook County, but. Uh, this is eleven western states and there's lots of, of uh, you know, open space, we all enjoy that open space. Uh, it changes everything from multiple use to single use, most solar developments, as you know. Are chain-linked fenced with razor wire on top of them. Um, and so they really limit access to everything and everyone, so.
And one of the, one of the big things at Planning Commission on the solar plants we okayed was the mi- the wildlife mi- migr- uh, migration and how much it changed it. And what's really bad in Cook County is there was a lot of people worked for that wildlife plan and then it fell apart. So we really don't have kind of as a planning commission a leg to stand on there. So again, I really did like your letter, I think the impacts are tremendous and I agree, I don't think the federal government. Should be going into that business at all.
On a separate but highly related topic, uh, during the short session, the Oregon Short Session. Uh, there was a bill uh, to eliminate uh, the state review process. For large-scale commercial solar on public lands. Uh, I think those that proposed that bill felt that through the public agency, NIPA process. Everybody had an adequate opportunity to comment and therefore the state didn't need to take a position. Uh, or be an active role in that. It failed, fortunately, I think it was a bad bill because it really. Uh, it takes, I think, a voice, the county, a county's voice. Uh, away from being able to say, you know. These are important or not important, or we need to think about mitigation, we need to think about other kinds of things. And if the state decides to take a backseat, then, then I think that's a bad deal, so. Um, I suspect that bill with similar language may come up. A year from now during the long session and hopefully like AOC and others will. Uh, take maybe a stronger position on. How the state should or should not participate in these if they come, and they are coming, so. Uh, the Prineville BLM District, some of you know, has received applications. Uh, for some large-scale solar commercial development. Uh, we have continually been told that those applications, four of them. Uh, that were within the confines of Cook County are not moving forward. Uh, but there are two in Deschutes County, one four thousand some odd acres between Bend and Redmond, I can't tell you. Exactly where is moving forward through a NIPA process. And the second one around the Lapine area may also move forward. But the four that are in Cook County are not going to move forward, so. Anyway, it's just kind of a heads up on some local stuff that's happening.
I could be mistaken and Will, you could maybe, didn't we have a solar plant that used just a section of BLM at one time? Or am I wrong in that? Remember we had them like boom, 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 and I thought there was one that. Used a corner or an ease, there was something in there. Just that, okay, it was just an easement, it was all it was, okay, yeah, I remember it was there and I remember we talked about it, I couldn't quite remember the details.
Yeah, those four applications that I said are not moving forward, uh, it was estimated to. The sum total would have been thirty to forty thousand acres in the Millikan Country.
We, we're not really taking comments from the crowd.
Yeah.
Now, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, for now, they're not moving forward.
And I think we're working extremely hard as a county, as well as a natural resource committee to just.
Stay on top of it.
To stay on top of it and and make sure that.
Yeah.
Tim and I met with them quite a while ago.
And and I will say the Prineville BLM District has been excellent.
Yes.
In keeping the county informed about their intentions and where these applications sit, so. Some famous person once said, trust but verify, so we're always involved.
Yes.
And thank you for your Natural Resources Committee.
Yes.
For keeping on this.
And I think it's important that the state stay involved in it, because that's our way of getting support in our, you know. Path of.
And and.
Voicing opposition.
I don't, Will, remember there, there's an acronym, of course, of state agencies that under the state process are required. Uh, to get involved when. Solar installations res- uh, reach a certain size, anything above that, this group has to be involved and. And so certainly on these large-scale public land ones, they would be of that size, and so. That's where all their ologists, the state's ologists, experts are and, and the state really needs to stay and. Be engaged and be responsible.
Yeah, and they have to do it for a private, you know, commercial, regular person, so why would they not have to do it for federal?
That's it.
Perfect, thanks, Tim. Will? And Katie?
Katie doesn't get to escape. Get this one, so.
There's an extra mic for her, she could have her own table.
I can, I can set it over here, I think we we can survive, so. Uh, for the record, Will Van Vactor, Community Development Director, Katie McDonald, our senior planner, is here with me. We are here just to do a quick presentation um, on some upcoming text amendments. To give the court an opportunity to kind of hear about the proposal, proposed amendments, start to think about it um, as we move towards uh, public hearings. Over the next month. Uh, so, I believe our agenda item request included a list or a uh. Kind of a table of contents, so kind of gives you a high-level view of the amendments we're looking at. Uh, we're just going to walk through these, these quickly, feel free to interrupt us with any questions you have, and again, we'll be coming back um. In the near future for a couple of public hearings on these matters. So first up, our farm breweries, this is a uh, an allowed use under state statute. So this is just incorporating what is allowed under state law at this point. In time, this should be a pretty much a direct reflection of what is in statute, so we're just kind of codifying in our own code, making it clear that this is an allowed use. And it's similar to a cidery or a winery, so it's just a, it's just one more of those types of uses that are a lot allowed on agricultural land.
Did Planning Commission make any tweaks to it at all?
This is one that went on untouched.
Okay.
Uh, next up is um, the template dwelling standard, so. In the forest zone, uh, template dwellings have been allowed. For as long as I can remember, uh, when you uh, ask for approval of a template dwelling, you look at kind of. You look at your property and then there has to be a certain number of dwellings within a certain distance um, to qualify for a template dwelling. The, one of the goals of this update, this is state legisl- legislature, by the way, this isn't something where we. Came up with on our own, but the the. Where we measure from, so basically says you have to, you have to measure from the mathematical centroid of of the subject parcel. And then you, depending on how productive the fourth land is, you, you know, you you look at um, how many. Existing dwellings you uh, be within that. That template. Uh, so that's one of the changes, um, the other change that the legislature made through the template dwelling standards is to um. Create a look-back date for whether or not in a dwelling existed on the tract. So a tract is comprised of multiple legal lots of record. Historically, um. You could, you could move property out of like your personal name, put it into an LLC and then kind of. You could maybe get a second dwelling through this template dwelling process. Um, with this look-back, if the entire tract is in your name in two thousand nineteen. Um, that's what we looked at in terms of trying to figure out, was there an existing dwelling at that time uh, or not? Um, so it kind of limits your ability to 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 transfer property into an LLC or some other holding kind of entity and limits. An additional dwelling on their tract, whereas historically you may have been able to do this. Importantly, on this one, this law is already effective here in Cook County, this is state law. They, the legislature phased this, this law in. Kind of in three groups of counties, I think we were the last group of counties to have this law become uh, effective. And so we have already sent out what's called a Measure Fifty-Six Notice to property owners in the forest zone who may be affected by this change. We're just, we're just making it clear in our code that this is in fact. What the law is, but it's already effective under statute uh, in Cook County, so we've sent the required notice out. And we're just, we're just putting the language into our codes so people. Um, can easily identify what standards apply when they ask for template dwelling.
Okay.
And then one of the big ones uh, we wanted to discuss with you um, are are um, ADU standards, so. The county has allowed ADUs inside the urban growth boundary for four or five years. Uh, but the legislature recently has allowed counties to adopt ADU standards. In uh, their rural residential zones, so outside urban growth boundaries. Um, a couple of counties at this point. Have adopted standards for ADUs, um. And this is, this is kind of the county's um. First attempt at identifying the appropriate standards for ADUs here in Cook County. So we worked, we had several work sessions with the Planning Commission on ADUs. Uh, this is kind of what we, we settled on between, between staff and the planning commission as as appropriate. For Cook County as we start to figure out what works here. So, I'm just going to kind of walk through. This language quickly with you, just to kind of give you guys an idea of um. What maybe is unique to Cook County based on the the proposal from the Planning Commission and what was just consistent with state, state law. Cause there's cer- certain minimum standards we have to comply with based on the standards identified in the legislation and adopted uh, in the statute. Um, and then, you know, we can be. We can be more restrictive, but not less restrictive than those standards, so. Um, working through this. I'm going to start on page, I think it's a hundred and fifty-one of your packet, but nine, nine of nineteen in terms of the staff before we submitted with this, so. Um, there's a number of definitions, I think the first thing I want to note on that page, a hundred and fifty-one, is towards the bottom. Under subsection B. It says the lot or parcel is at least five acres in size, so this varies from state law. State law would allow the county to allow ADUs in rural residential zones on lots of parcels as small as two acres. Um, but the Planning Commission felt. For a couple of reasons, that five acres was the most appropriate, um, at least as a starting point, it's much easier to um. Kind of start big and then. As we start small and then say, oh, that was a mistake, now we're taking certain rights away that um. That otherwise wouldn't have existed, so. Starting with five acres, so this ensures that we've got plenty of room for septic systems and importantly, plenty of room for um. What the statute refers to is adequate access and kind of safe evacuation routes or safe evacuation. Areas to go to in 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 the case of a wildfire. So that, that was one recommendation from the Planning Commission that varied from what state law technically would allow. Uh, we also just on, as a sub, uh, a side note on, on the lot size, um. In Juniper acre, we, Juniper Canyon, excuse me, we have a number of lots that are like one point nine acres. And because this is state law and there's no language built into the statute that allows for any sort of variance for size. We'd have a number of two-acre lots that would have been precluded and that kind of created. Certain equity kind of issue in terms of what what's fair and and what's. Uh, appropriate, so that, that's just kind of a side note, that was something the planning commission discussed. Um, in regards to what, what lot size is appropriate here in Cook County. So these are just some highlights from what what's required by statute, the ADU must be no further than one hundred feet from the existing dwelling. Can't be larger than nine hundred square feet. The ADU must provide for adequate access. We worked um, with the um. Fire department on what, what works for them as far as adequate access. There has to be an evacuation plan, place for the residents of the ADU. Again, we worked with the fire department to determine what, what size is appropriate for. The safe evacuation route in the area, I mean, that's identified there in the, in the code language. Then lastly. I wanted to note that the Planning Commission also in in conversations about where ADUs would be appropriate. Again, just kind of initially, they settled on um. In light of potential wildfire risks of Juniper Canyon, some of the lot size issues we have of Juniper Canyon. They felt that the most appropriate spot, at least initially for ADUs, as the county kind of learns of, learns more about the impact from ADUs and. How they may impact transportation, all that sort of stuff, they felt like the, the most appropriate spot to allow ADUs at this time is in the. They felt that the the most appropriate spot to allow ADUs at this time is in the Palbeut area. So they have recommended that we only allow ADUs um in the, I think, the R five zone, R ten zone, and the PBR twenty zone. And then we've cut, we've um created some language that kind of defines the geographic area um where those ADUs are allowed. So that was these are just some some kind of special provisions we have here in Creek County that vary state statute. I just want to give the commission an opportunity to consider those before we go to a public hearing and get any feedback you guys may have on those. Um, any unique characteristics of our our ADU standards.
So just having Palbeuton would probably be a little more restrictive than what the state is.
These goes up to twenty acres, did I hear you say, or?
Well, yeah.
It would be the five acres.
You have to have at least five acres um to to qualify for an ADU under this, under the proposed language before the
Yeah, but I was referring to location, geographic area.
Would be, because in theory, we could, the county could allow ADUs in every rural residential zone within the the county's boundaries. So that would be, you know, everything up Juniper Canyon. It would be potential, well, um, you know, along the Ochko reservoir, uh where we have some smaller lots. Um, so you get into that two acre question about whether or not they're big enough. Um, so, uh, but again, this is we we set um ADUs are eventually going to be subject to some limitations based on the wildfire risk map, which we we yet to see. Um, so as we start to get more information and more we become more comfortable with where ADUs may be appropriate. Um, you know, if the standards are good that we've identified, and it's relatively easy to go back into our code and say, oh, you know, let's add ADUs as a as a allowed use um in the RR and five zone, which is Juniper Canyon. But it gives us an opportunity to kind of see how they roll out, what the impact is. And and, you know, get feedback from the community as to whether or not we should be allowing them elsewhere.
Logic and the plan that you're going. I just needed clarification that the state was pretty broad and we're kind of checking it down. But but I approve of that. That's great.
And the the just one other comment on ADUs, um, we've tried to draft these standards so that it's a a check the box uh review for staff on our end. You don't, we don't want to create um a situation where we're having to use discretion. Our review of of these applications and having to send notice to neighbors. So it's it was important to us as we tried to work through these and we worked with the fire department to come up with language that was um objective here and objective so that we could check the box um in our review um without creating a situation where we're issuing land decisions that require require notice. So as you guys think about this language, um really appreciate any feedback you might have in terms of whether something may be subjective, a little unclear as to whether or not um, we can just check the box on on that part of the review. So.
Will the people in that area still have the ability to weigh in? Are you, is the public input over or is it just be, it's just beginning?
Yeah, it's it's kind of been ongoing. So we had a public hearing with the planning commission last month. And then we will have two public hearings here with the um the board over the next month or year. So there's there's plenty of opportunities still for folks to to weigh in, the public hearing process. Do you have anything else to add to ADU conversation?
No, we ju- we've had multiple work sessions on it. From back from last summer. So I think the planning commission were very thoughtful in how Creek County was going to look at the ADUs.
Did you have much involvement from the community?
No, there was I there was not significant participation at the at the work session or the public hearing. We have we have over the last two years received a number of emails and phone inquiries about ADUs, about when when the county is going to allow them, but uh in terms of the the language that has been proposed and has kind of evolved over the last year or so. Um, we have not received any substantive feedback in terms of what.
No real negative comments.
Katie, would you like to discuss the lighting?
No, I'm I'm waiting for dark sky, the outdoor lighting thing. You know how Gary and I feel about that, Katie. So there you go.
The planning commission was was supportive of the lighting.
Was Carrie at the work session?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, and yeah, you know, at the work session and at the um, the public hearing that we had. So the lighting standards that that are in um included in the amendment come from the place of um, a natural resource being the our skies and having um, guidance for people who are applying, moving to the area and for folks that lived here. Um, we received quite a bit of written testimony um, that came in for in support of these um lighting standards as they're before you. We also received um with that testimony uh requests to go further than what the planning commission um has put forward. The intent with these lighting standards is lighting is essential. You need it. Everybody needs to be able to be safe and have the the lighting that they need for what they're doing. Um, the the purpose statement in here, I think, really incorporate encapsulates what we're trying with this and have lighting be guided in such a way that it lights only the subject property shielded down. It doesn't light the sky. It doesn't light your neighbor's property and or the or the right of ways, right? So um, there's no, you know, there's no restriction. It says you can't have lighting, just shielded, pointed down where it needs to be. And that and then the standards that are in here gives more definition of what you know, those might be. And um, it lists a whole, you know, section for exemptions.
When it says light trespass,
Mm hmm.
What does that mean? If I can see somebody's light, is that trespassing on me or is it that light has to shine on my property?
It that's a good, good question.
I think the intent is, you can see a light from a long way.
A very long ways away.
So I think the intent was not to have like the
The foot candle. So the definition of it says which falls beyond the property on which it is installed, right? So that's the foot candle. So when you have your light and then you have your foot candle shielded, if this foot candle falls outside of your property line or falls somewhere else, that's what a light trespass is, but that's a great question.
Remember the gentleman that came in? It wasn't on our agenda and he was just blown away by the guy next door. This doesn't help him, right? Because that light is basically grandfathered in, isn't it?
The way that this is written is that um there's no change to that light.
Because the light is all.
The light is already there. However, it does provide an opportunity that if that neighbor came in to do a new building or a new structure or to remodel that building, we could say, have you thought about changing out the light? Are you changing out the lights?
So my question is, if he does do that, let's say he does remodel and he comes in for a permit, does that require all those lights to be changed? Or, I mean, I understand in this case it was bad and I understand we were what do I want to say useless or whatever, that we couldn't help the man. But this other guy goes in for a small permit, does that require him now to change all the lights on his property because of this new ordinance? I read this last night, but it was really late, Katie, and I was very tired. So I probably should know this answer and I apologize.
So there's a couple of things with your question, right? So there's one where we have obviously a neighbor that has unshielded lights that are going directly into the neighbor on the onto the neighbor's property, right? So that's that's one issue. The other issue, the question that I'm hearing you ask is if that neighbor, if anyone comes in for a remodel or any permit, would it require that they meet the current lighting standard? And I don't have, I don't have that. I'd have to go back and reread this. There is something in here about remodels and about like if someone comes in for a site plan review or let's say that they had a site plan review and they never built and now they're doing a modification and changing something. They're going to be subject to today's codes.
Sure.
Right? Because you're changing that, just not only lighting.
Would you, I think what she's asking is if, say, you come in and at a bathroom, are you going to now have to replace all the lighting on your property, which could be a a huge cost?
And I did agree with the man. I know he was in a bad situation, but that's basically what I'm asking. Yes, exactly.
We can we can review the language like more specifically. I think the intent is to the intent related to require, like if you're changing, if you if you're changing light fixtures, if that's specifically what you're doing or as part of your project, then we would ask you to to look
Yes.
at updating it to be consistent with this code. But if you're doing something interior, like a bathroom remodeling, you're not touching the exterior and that light fixture is staying the same, then then I don't think that was the intent, required a change in that thing.
So that's on the applicability and it's point oh three oh. And except, so there's an exception, it guides you down to that exceptions. And then it says all outdoor lighting fixtures installed or replaced after the effective date, right? So if you're replacing your outdoor lighting fixtures as a part of your remodel or something like that.
It has to be.
Then it would meet today's code, but it does not say, these are outdoor fixtures. If you're not replacing your outdoor fixtures with a bathroom interior remodel, then it would.
What if you had a building? What if you had a out outbuilding?
Again, I think the intent is if you're replacing that specific light fixture.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not getting to a situation where somebody wants to add a shed to their large property and then they have to spend twenty thousand dollars replacing lights, you know, whatever that cost is. Uh, I got another curveball for you. Uh, what about the American flag, right?
Those are exempt.
Okay, anything with a flag is exempt.
Yeah, it's in here that you could.
Under the exemptions.
I did read that and I did retain that. I was just concerned about existing. And like I say, again, just economically, and I did agree that man, I wish the neighbors could have worked it out. I agree there. And I think in Polina, we really don't have that problem because we're too far apart, but that was my only thing is that could become a financial burden that we're kind of using that as a wedge to now replace everything.
So again, this is not against lights, not against lighting. It is
Downward shielding.
Where it needs to be for many reasons and safety and personal use and what it is needed for. But shielded, pointed down, kept on your own property and not lighting the sky.
And we've been asking that at planning commission for, I mean, we've been putting that in as a condition on I don't know how many, how many years really that we did downward. So this is just solidifying it and I agree, but like I say, I just want to make sure that we didn't put a fiscal impact on someone just adding an eight by ten shed.
And and just, you know, just a reminder, this is work session. If you if you all have any feedback on any of the languages and stuff, that's kind of why we're doing this. We want to want to hear it. And try to address it before we get too far, too much further down the road. Um, next, next in the package is quickly Juniper Acres purpose statement. I know I've talked to I've talked to you about this before. I think in twenty twenty one, there was an inadvertent update to the purpose statement that said county will not issue any new building permits in Juniper Acres. I don't think that was the intent, although clearly we have some limitations on the development that are continue to be necessary in Juniper Acres. The intent, I don't believe, was to change our fire practice, which was to honor vested conditional use permits um, to allow folks to remodel retrofit an existing lawful dwelling or structure or to say no to somebody who wanted to um construct a an accessory structure uh in in, you know, that's accessory you would lawful use. So this update to the purpose statement just clarifies that the county's intent isn't isn't to say no new building permits whatsoever, because there are certain lawful, existing lawful uses out there that should be honored, uh in my opinion, but um, instead, in these certain circumstances, we will allow um building permits. So this clarifies the purpose statement uh for Juniper Acres. Uh, lastly, we have an update to our transmission tower. This is really just a cleanup issue. Uh, it looked to staff like there was um, when this language was put together, they inadvertently included the submittal requirements as requirements for the conditional use permit. When you do a transmission tower, it may be a conditional use permit or it may not be. It's not always a conditional use permit if you look at height. Uh, and we think immediately staff believe that the submittal requirements were intended to apply to all um, transmission tower applications, not just the conditional use permit application requirement. So we just, it's just a sub uh kind of heading, you know, to make sure it's clear um that those middle requirements apply in in all circumstances.
On the Juniper Acres thing, I'm hoping that you guys are kind of pushing that firewise pamphlet, even if they are an accessory building or something like that. But I know we started doing that and I'd like to see that because even a shed needs to be firewise, especially in that volatile of an area.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's hard to find a code path forward for most folks for new.
I I get it, but I mean, I'm hoping that that brochure at least goes out and puts a thought process out there and and I know we started kind of asking that, but.
No, I, that's a great point. Try to increase our our consistency with pushing that out in Juniper Acres. Uh, just on Juniper Acres real quickly, I think there's um, there's been some folks out in Juniper Acres who have indicated, um, they think that the county is considering a significant kind of change to the the code language um for um, as part of this text amendment. I, we saw we may get, we may get some testimony from folks, which is great. I hope they participate, but this this is not intended to be anything other than just to kind of codify what our practice has been for the last fifteen, twenty years. It's not as much a change to the the big picture kind of limitations on development or policy. Great, so just to add something.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, guys. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Would you guys mind if we did a quick break between now and the next one?
Be great, yes, because then we could, I can even get a cup of coffee.
Yeah.
All right.
Ready to go?
Yeah.
All right, can everybody hear me?
You're doc.
Carrie Hathorn, Crook County District Attorney. Um, I put this item on the agenda to ask the commissioners to take action on, uh, the ongoing conversation we've had since February, which is to, uh, formally, uh, amend the existing agreement with PERS, which has currently law enforcement, uh, in Crook County enrolled in police fire PERS to add, uh, the deputy district attorneys that are employed with the county, um, on or after January 1st, 2024, to the existing agreement pursuant to the legislative intent of House Bill 2054. Um, I want to let the commissioners know that, um, Margaret Only, who has been involved, uh, she is Carolyn Powell's attorney and has been assisting in this. And she was present during the meeting, um, with PERS that led that email that was attached to the pa, to the packet that specifically answered a number of the, uh, issues that had been raised, uh, which were what were the impacts to the entire county with the enrollment, um, of DDAs. She's only available till 10:30. Um, so part of the reason that I, um, I put this on originally, you can see I, I originally filed the agenda item request back in March. Um, part of the reason for the urgency is that, um, as most of you know, my chief deputy district attorney Laura, um, has handed in her resignation at, uh, effect, a couple of weeks ago. Um, so that leaves my office, uh, in even more dire of a situation. Um, the, the deciding factor for Laura giving her resignation is that she's leaving, uh, to return to, um, our local defense consortium, uh, which provides public defense services in our community. Um, she'll have significantly fewer cases assigned to her. She'll make more money and she'll have more flexibility and fewer hours required to work. Um, I have budgeted five attorneys with Laura leaving, I'll have three. Those include Carolyn, um, Powell, who you've heard from previously, and she's present here today. She's a very experienced prosecutor. She's a retired prosecutor with over 21 years of experience, who, uh, I was fortunate to lure back into public service here in Crook County. She's been here since last July. I also have a baby prosecutor who's fresh out of law school, um, who this is her very first legal job ever. Um, and she's worked here five months. And then I have an attorney who, while an experienced attorney in the civil field is brand new to criminal law, who's been here one week. So that is who will be working for the citizens of Crook County prosecuting the cases that we have, uh, effective May 17th, when Laura leaves. With those attorneys, we're responsible for reviewing and making charges, charging decisions on every case sent to us by law enforcement. That includes the numbers that you often hear in budget presentations from the sheriff's office. It also includes the, the cases referred to us by the Oregon State Police, Primeville Police Department, and any other crime that occurs in Crook County. In looking at, um, our recent numbers, our numbers are certainly up. What you often see filed with the court is only a small measure of what we're involved with, uh, during the day, during the evening, during weekends. And it's no secret that I've told you multiple times that we need humans, we need prosecutors in our office. Uh, in March alone, there were 111 jail bookings. That's just simply the people who are taken into the jail.
If she's going to be done at 3:30, you've only got five minutes. So it might be worth getting her to weigh in and then we can kind of hear all, all of that stuff after.
That's fine. Um, and I, um, I wanted to, let me touch on one piece that before I get there and I can circle back. Um, ORS 8.690 specifically authorizes the county court, uh, to, um, to request, if requested for the district attorney to provide the county court and other county officers' legal advice, um, upon request. So this whole conversation we've been having about that the district attorney shouldn't be part of this conversation or the district attorney is not allowed to provide you legal advice, um, is incorrect. I would ask the, uh, the commissioners to, if you want to hear from Ms. Only, um, to allow her an opportunity to speak if she wishes, um, and, um, provide information about some of the background of the legislative intent and the requirements of the statute.
I would like to hear her speak, so if you're there, yes, speak away.
Uh, good morning, uh, members of the county commission. My name is Margaret Only. I'm an attorney at Bennett Hartman and our office, um, and I have, represent, um, a lot of public employees and have also worked closely with the PERS coalition on issues relating to PERS. Um, I think that before the, the commission, our two questions, I mean, one is, uh, as presented by your elected DA, what do you need to do in order to recruit and retain qual, you know, quality DAs? That's, um, and then the second is what is the legislative intent of this, of, of the statutes? And what, you know, how should the county respond to that? Um, the concerns I had heard raised is that, uh, there is a risk to the county that all county employees, um, would have to become members of PERS if the county were to amend its current agreement with PERS to include your DDAs in your, uh, law enforcement unit that is currently required by PERS. And I'd just like to speak to the, to that issue specifically. I think that is just patently false and wrong. I wrote an email that I shared with Carolyn and I believe it's been shared with the commissioners, kind of outlining why I think that that is a, a red herring, that that is really not a concern here. The statute, the PERS has made clear and the statute has always authorized the county to have a separate, um, that, so the PERS statute before was amended to have OPSERP in 2003, allowed public employers to have, um.
What's OPSERP?
OPSERP is the name for the, um, Oregon Public Employee. Now I'm gonna, uh, it, it is the, the, the program that is in place for current employees, current tier three. It's the, that's, that's the technical name for tier three, um, PERS employees. So while currently per, and there certainly is a push to have all, you know, PERS would like everybody to be, um, within a jurisdiction to be in PERS, it has no authority to require that. Um, and if the DA, DDAs were added to your existing law enforcement, it would not risk having everybody in there. The, the piece that I understand is that there is a provision in the statute that says, um, that all employees of a participating employer have to become PERS members. And that is simply if you've been working for six months, if you're otherwise a covered employee. The statute specifically contemplates that, uh, a local jurisdiction can enter into a contract with the board to provide membership to all or part of the employees who do not become members of the system at the time the employer became a participating employer. That's ORS 238 oh 35 sub six. So a very specific statutory provision allows the county to add these, to add the DDAs to the existing law enforcement, um, without, um, without running afoul or without any risk that everybody else should be in there. Um, I think there is also some confusion about the import of the equal to or better than argument. So the ability, I just want to be clear that the ability of the county to add, um, the DDAs to your law enforcement unit is unrelated to the employee's coverage under equal to or better than. Um, that's a different statute, that's 237 610. So while the sheriff's office may be in PERS as a result of a decision back in, I think it was, you know, a long time ago that they were not meeting the equal to or better than requirement. That is not, that, that, that doesn't turn, that doesn't decide whether or not the DDAs can be included. Again, there's a specific statutory provision for per, in PERS and ORS 238, um, oh 35 sub six that expressly authorizes them. And PERS has sent an email saying that that is what is going to be happening. And finally, I would just say that this notion, um, I, I think there's, there's very little risk and that to the extent this concern is about this being an administrative decision and, you know, is there some kind of lawsuit that's waiting to happen? I think, um, it's important to note that PERS longstanding and consistent interpretation, application of its statutes is going to be extremely hard to overcome in a judicial challenge. Um, so, you know, A, the, the language doesn't support a claim. And even if, and to the extent there's any argument, the court's going to defer to PERS's interpretation of that, um, absent it being cleared unambiguous, that it's contrary to that, and it certainly isn't. So, um, as to this concern about the risk of other employees coming in, I think there is none. And then just to state the obvious, um, the legislature clearly believed that DDAs are an essential component of the law enforcement community and need to be, you know, they are subjected, you know, prosecuting people who are accused of murder, child abuse, all, for all of the reasons why a lot of, by fire and police have special, um, categories. Law, the stat, the legislature made clear that they thought DDAs were entitled to the same kind of coverage. And I think that Crook County, um, has the ability to and should act consistently with that legislative intent.
So, so what you're saying is we wouldn't be actually the ones adding it, that they've actually been added by the legislature? And we would just be following what those, what that group of, at the state level said?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a little, so, so it is not, they are not automatically included because they, because they are not currently PERS employees. If they were like in, in Deschutes County where you're going to be competing, they're already in PERS. They're going to automatically be moved from PERS into police and fire. That's going to happen automatically for Crook County because your DDAs are not currently in PERS. What you need to do as PERS is directed is send an email saying, um, you know, basically amend your contract with PERS that's authorized law enforcement and say, we seek to add the DDAs to our law enforcement unit. That's, and that is consistent with the legislative intent, what the stat, what the legislature intended. And it's going to be increasingly important, I believe, for you to be able to recruit and retain folks. And I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I don't believe that was the intent of the legislature. The legislature would have said that you have to put your employees into it. But the legislature said that if your employees are into it, first, that they will be with the law enforcement category.
I, in, in the world of PERS, I think that the, the, um, there is, you know, as you are aware, there are only nine jurisdictions within the entire state that do not, are not completely PERS covered. So I think due respect, legislature probably didn't even think about that aspect. I think the intent was that DDAs are going to be included. Um, and I, I'm not arguing that they are automatically included, but clearly there was no legislative intent to leave DDAs, um, not, not treated differently simply because they are, uh, in a, in a jurisdiction that doesn't participate in PERS. Um, so, um, I, I, yeah. And I, and I do think that everybody kind of assumed that they would be sort of, by being in police and fire, they would be in, uh, the equal to or better than. I think that is not an accurate statement by the statute, I think, but I, you know, so, um, but that is certainly what folks intended in the DDAs and in our conversation with PERS. The DDA ad, the District Attorneys Association advocate was, uh, fairly frustrated by this process.
Okay, thank you for your opinion.
Thank you, Margaret.
Okay, thank you. I apologize and I need to hop off. Um, and I hope that was helpful and, um, I look forward to hearing what the outcome is. Thank you.
I spoke previously to this, to the county court regarding the, some of the history, some of my frustrations. And I want to be clear that my intent in the statements that I made is that I think it's important for the county commissioners and the public to understand what's happening in my office. So when you have people who are arrested, when you have citizens who have been victims of crimes, um, and they're wondering why they can't have a meeting with the assigned prosecutor, because the assigned prosecutor has, Laura has 200 cases assigned to her, 200, that I have to figure out where there's, those are going. Do those go to the one week prosecutor or the five month prosecutor? If that's your family member, your child, if that's your home that was broken into, what do you want me to do? Those are the questions that keep me up at night. So while people can say that I'm impassioned or I'm emotional about this, my obligation is to this community. So yes, I'm very passionate about making sure that our community is safe. Making sure that when I'm meeting with that family member who lost a loved one, with that parent whose child was sexually abused, making sure that those people are not out in our community committing additional crimes, harming additional people, that they have a measure of justice within our system. I'm also very passionate about being transparent, about there being reliance on our justice system. One of the most frustrating pieces of this process since February is all of the shenanigans that have gone on. All the secrecy, the hidden meetings, the huge packet that was submitted to the county court, uh, that wasn't provided to me, but I saw it online last night, talking about that we're overstaffed, freezing our hiring. The fact that I can't get Laura's position even posted online, presumably that's held up. The fact that I can't get Laura's position even posted online, presumably that's held up because of this proposal. When we're looking at the numbers that are in my office, not one person who is proposing that we're overstaffed, that I should have fewer prosecutors in my office, has spent a day in my office. So you can go online and pull numbers from what has been filed. You can go online and pull numbers from what other counties have as prosecutors. Why don't you come to my office and see what's happening? See what I have to cancel when we don't have enough bodies in the building to cover everywhere that we need to be? Figure out what case is going to be declined because we don't have a prosecutor who can handle that case. That's what I'm looking at. That's why I'm shouting from the top of the roof about this is on fire. We have to do something. So to simply say it's not the intent of the legislature, we've answered the questions. You have the information before you to make a decision. In the last twelve months, we filed one thousand seven hundred and three misdemeanor cases or misdemeanor counts in nine hundred and forty one cases. A hundred and ninety seven felony cases that have four hundred and thirty three felony counts. Two hundred and nine cases were submitted to grand jury and we've had three hundred and fifty five cases set for trial. So do I assign the prosecutor to go into court by themselves presumably? Because I don't have enough bodies to double team everybody up. Do I assign Carolyn to go in and train that baby prosecutor? Or do I assign her to work on the complex felony cases? We have two felony, uh, two homicides currently filed. We have others, multiple others that are waiting for review and filing. We need experienced prosecutors. This is not a secret. We can't keep the lights on in the building without experienced prosecutors. The legislative intent, I think, is clear. I think the commissioners rely on legislative intent. We just heard a whole conversation about light with the legislative intent. And not to dismiss that, but why is this the hang up? When we've given you the numbers, we've given you the legislative intent, why the retaliation against my office? Because I've spoken about what's happening behind the scenes to my office, the retaliation that we're experiencing. It's wrong.
I want to be clear though, that I, that I have not retaliated.
No, and I'm not talking about.
I want to be clear that Laura has retaliated.
That is untrue, absolutely untrue, because Andy has one hundred percent retaliated against my office.
He has got the information. It's going to be questioned of him.
Andy's gone to every.
I haven't never seen an argument with you. Let's get on to the, on to the problem here.
I'd like to hear her speak.
The problem is, is that Andy has prevented jobs from being posted. Andy has gone, had secret meetings where the commissioners were pressed to vote out my DDAs from PERS without my office knowing. Andy has instructed finance without, without advising me to put the DDAs back into the 401K. There's multiple things that are happening in secret that aren't, that I'm not being advised about that are in my office. You think I don't hear when he goes to department to department telling other departments that I'm going to bankrupt the county? That's incorrect. We've given you the information about it. So there's a lot of misinformation that has been presented to the commissioners. My job is to make, is to educate you. I am the district attorney for this county. I can't control ultimately what choices other people make, but I can control that I educate you. I have an obligation to educate you as to what's happening in my office. This isn't about any other agenda other than telling you what's happening with my office and what your administrator is doing to my office. We don't have time to keep waiting. We don't have time and nor should the county spend. The, I think the, the estimate that I saw from the most recent attorney that was solicited was nine hundred and fifty five dollars an hour. We have to act now. I'm asking the court to move forward with the legislative intent, with the statute, and to formally add the DDAs into the police fire PERS, the existing, with the existing membership currently with the sheriff's office. We can't afford not to.
And would that be your legal opinion?
That is my legal opinion, which I am authorized to provide to you pursuant to ORS eight point six nine zero. I'm happy to answer any questions. I said I wasn't going to get spicy, but it got spicy.
I thought you were very good spice. So you don't keep the spice away. That's called passion. Are you wanting to do yours or?
Yes, please. Go ahead and put that PowerPoint up and be glad to write some context to do this and respond to the allegations.
I want to hear from you about the overstaffing because I don't believe that and I do want to hear an explanation.
Yeah, I'll certainly respond to all of what the DA presented. And we are here talking about this because the board has not taken any action to enroll the deputy DAs into PERS. That is the sole responsibility of the court or the board, not of staff. And inadvertently staff enrolled the DAs, deputy DAs into PERS. And that's led to the variety of things that have taken place since that time. The issue really here, big picture, this organization, we know, has a recruitment and retention issue. It's organization wide and is particularly prevalent, prevalent in executive, technical and professional positions. As you are aware, not only were we having challenges in the DA's office with recruiting, but we have had an accounting manager position vacant for over a year. We've had with or without three professional IT folks that you've just authorized to go out and use an executive search firm to, you know, to fill those positions. Key to the ongoing ability for the DAs to do their jobs and for the rest of this county to provide the services that they ultimately provide. So as an administrator and you, we're all aware of the challenges facing our leaders, our department heads to recruit and retain competent professional staff as well as other staff within the organization. The question really is, in my mind, will the expanded use of PERS help this situation? And if yes, is it worth risking an estimated fifteen to eighteen positions? That's not me coming up with that decision. You have different attorneys coming up with different conclusions. I'm not an attorney. I'm just giving you what the attorney of record, Aaron Landau from Rang Long, has indicated to you. And my guess is attorneys will play this game and take this issue and fight it out in court. And anybody that thinks they know the outcome of that is delirious. It will be whatever they come up with and it's completely unpredictable. Next slide, please. Yeah, competitive landscape. Crook County is in the Bend metropolitan statistical area. It's got a population of over a quarter million people. Crook County is about ten percent of that number. Jefferson County, another ten percent, Crook County or Deschutes County, eighty percent. The vast majority of your professional folks are living in the Bend area, not in the outlying areas. Think historically and going forward, Crook County and Prineville will be competing for talent in this area. I have had direct experience with this issue for thirty seven years for employment to economic development. My position working within the city of Bend as a CFO, assistant city manager, serving on the economic development board, working in Madras as the city administrator, serving as a consultant to Bend, to Crook County, to Redmond, to Madras. Been dealing with this issue for a long, long time. And it's not necessarily going to get any different. It's maybe getting more challenging. But we are very fortunate to have access to the talent that lives in the Bend area. But the need in terms of filling these positions, how we structure our compensation and so forth, has to be very strategic. We do not have the bank role that Deschutes County has or the city of Bend has. Next slide, please. This just shows the unemployment rate in the Bend MSA going back to ninety two. You can see that we are at historic low unemployment rates, which means we're at some very, very competitive market. Next slide, please. Where has Crook County been with respect to compensation and benefits? Dating back to two thousand eighteen, when our firm helped, uh, the firm that's going through the update of compensation schedules right now for nonrepresented folks, which include the DDAs. When we first came here in two thousand seventeen, the pay for Crook County nonrepresented was in the approximately thirty seventh percentile. So below the midpoint. After our work, you know, that was raised up, uh, close to the fiftieth percentile. There was recommendations given to this, uh, board to increase the compensation schedules by the CPI going forward so that the positions did not worsen and to evaluate and potentially increase those beyond that if you wanted to improve your competitive position. The board here chose to go with one percent annual increases, ultimately reducing the competitive position of the organization so that in two thousand twenty two, we're back again below the fortieth percentile. The last few years, you know, that have been here, we have been working tirelessly trying to address this compensation issue, going through significant amount of fiscal analysis to show that we can sustain additional pay. There's been several pay rates above the CPI. There have been one-time payments. There have been benefit changes and so forth, including the 401K. Where you can see we've gone from thirty nine hundred a year or three twenty five a month for all people, all employees, including the deputy DAs that were making, you know, near six-figure income, getting three twenty five a month. We've changed that benefit to where it, you know, went from eight percent or from that number to eight percent to ten percent to twelve percent. It's gone, you, from a health plan, you've had excellent health plans this entire time. Your 401K was, uh, in poorer, a poorer benefit. It's gone to better to good to, I think, you know, a very good benefit. Could it be more? Potentially could be more. It's a lot more flexible to change that and increase that and manage that than it is to make the decision to go into PERS, which is non-flexible in all respects. Uh, next slide, please. With the pending pay adjustment, which, uh, we had planned to talk about today. Uh, however, Vance is still working on updating that and getting that report ready to distribute. We would plan to bring that to the April seventeenth meeting. May require, you know, waiting till the twenty fourth to go through and do a work session to make sure everybody's fully aware of what that plan entails. But the objective has been to get that implemented, uh, here this fiscal year, hopefully by May first. But at the end of the day, what we believe is the case is with the enhancements of this compensation plan, the benefit changes that have already been made during the past two years, Crook County will have a competitive total compensation package. Next slide, please. Thank you. We have a few pending items that, uh, you may have significant costs associated with them. You have a road union labor negotiation, uh, that contract ends June thirtieth of twenty four. We have a request to reopen the Sheriff's Deputies Association contract early. That contract expires June thirtieth of twenty five. We spoke about that in executive session last week. And then we have the request to enroll the DDAs into PERS. The items above have the potentially increased costs above the forecasted numbers that we have in our five-year strategic plans. That's, you know, and that ultimately, you know, if that happens, that, you know, has an impact, you know, to service levels. The other thing that we anticipate to happen is we improve the benefits and the pay. What we would see retention improve. As that retention improves, the amount of money that we're spending, we would expect that to go up. So for example, right now in the sheriff's office with the history that they've had in recruitment and retention, their actual expenditures are less than ninety percent of their budgeted authority. As we add employees that stay here longer and we don't have those vacancies, those expenditures are going to increase. We expect that. We've built that somewhat into the forecast, but it's, you know, it's, it's a factor that's out there that, uh, may impact our ability to add additional staffing as we grow as a community until, you know, we get out into, um, the fiscal twenty-three range when we start to see more data center money that exceeds the revenue or exceed the expenditures forecasted. Next slide, please. Little history on, uh, PERS and 401K, you know, for this organization is the sheriff's office enrolled in PERS in nineteen seventy three. It was uniform only. The 401K plan was created in nineteen eighty five. From nineteen seventy three to current, the governing board has opposed expanding PERS. PERS rates have increased from approximately twelve percent to over thirty percent. The county has increased its 401K from the three twenty five a month in twenty twenty two to, you know, now where it's twelve percent of salary presently. I've heard a lot about the legislative intent. Yet I'm not an attorney. I'm just a simple guy reading the, the bill. And the bill itself was introduced by the Multnomah County Prosecuting Attorneys Association. We're advised that this is not a PERS bill. PERS had no input in this bill. PERS was not consulted in this bill. It was done without any of their collaboration or assistance. The bill is an act, it's a bill for an act that relates to the status of district attorneys. And I underline, underline in the public employee's retirement system. It doesn't, doesn't speak to those that aren't in, those that want to be in. It says those that are in the system. This was something that's covered in my memo in that this bill was introduced back in the twenty-three legislative session. It was brought to my attention. We looked at it. There was no further communication on it. It didn't get to the county court at the time to have discussion. There was no input from the county court back to the legislature on the potential impact of this bill. And if we look at the fiscal impacts ultimately of this bill, uh, you know, I'll cover that, I think, in a later slide. It's clear that the state impact i- is nominal relative to the counties and we'll touch on that in a minute. Next slide, please. And I just can add a third column to this. I believe, um, there is maybe a fourth column to this. There is, from a legal opinion standpoint, the county must enroll DDAs into PERS. We have Rang Long, uh, that's Aaron Landau. His legal opinion is no. PERS has said no. I believe if I understood correctly, only says no. And I'm not sure where the DA has, you know, is, she originally said that we must enroll them. I'm not sure if that opinion has changed or not. May the county enroll DDAs into PERS? That's a yes across the board. If the county does enroll DDAs into PERS, will the county have to enroll the rest of the non-PERS employees into PERS? Rang Long has indicated that there is a risk for this to happen. PERS admin is saying no, it's not a legal opinion, however. And they further communicated that they would not be able to provide a legal opinion until there was a suit filed. A suit would be filed only after the county was ultimately enrolled in the program. And once you're enrolled, it's like the Hotel California, you can't get out. So you'd be stuck with whatever the opinion or the decision is by the court.
I think it's you can never leave.
You can never leave. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Eagles Fan.
And then the, the other attorney that with the third, uh, that you said, that you added, she said that she believed, agreed with PERS that there was no legal requirement to add the rest.
Right. Now, if you added Olney's, she said no, and I believe the DA is saying no as well. Next slide, please. With respect to the, the fiscal impact, you know, I've read through that with, you know, legislative information. At a state level, you know, they're talking less than a half a million dollars fiscal impact. Thirty-six attorney, you know, thirty-six DAs to be going from. And in the PERS world, this is, again, the bill's to take the PERS members from their general service category, which is retirement, I believe, around age sixty-two, thirty years worth of service, to change them to be police and fire, which allows them, as I understand it, to retire, I believe, at age fifty-five, twenty-five years of service. That's the only impact which increases the contribution rate of. That's the only impact which increases the contribution rate of the employee, employer, the state and the county for our portion from say twenty-four percent in our case to upwards of thirty percent. So it's about a six percent nominal increase. So at a state level, it's financially insignificant. Wouldn't, would understand completely why the state would, legislators would say, yeah, this isn't really an issue. Cook County DAs, on the other hand, you know, it's seventy thousand for the, you know, the current staffing, a hundred thousand on a budget basis, so four hundred to five hundred thousand a year. The Cook County population nineteen, or excuse me, twenty-six thousand relative to a state population of over four million. And the impact to us is twenty percent of the state impact. So it's a major situation relative back to the county and why this is an important issue for you to discuss and debate and make a decision upon. With respect to if all employees that are presently not in PERS were to be required, that number goes up to one point six to one point eight million. And over a five-year period, that's eight to nine million dollars. In a legal situation, we're not going to know the answer to this, assuming we had a court case filed timely for a year, two years, if the court case comes a two, three, four years from now, you may not know for five, six years. You could end up with a significant unfunded liability if the court were to choose to go that other direction. Contrast, and I provide this information only for comparison purposes. The equal to or better as communicated by Ottley, and there's no disagreement by myself or, you know, Haring Long, Aaron Landau, that the county is under any requirement to provide equal to or better benefits to the deputy DAs or anybody else as a result of House Bill twenty fifty-four. The point of bringing it all up is there may be subsequent legislation that would require this. And also, when you're out recruiting, it might be worthwhile to continue to evaluate your benefit package and make enhancements in a nominal basis that continue to make your particular environment more competitive with others. And you have that flexibility to do that for a fraction of the cost of enrolling in PERS. And that applies to the deputy DAs as well as the rest of the nonrepresented employees. It would apply to the sheriff's office personnel if not for the ability to not be able to leave the PERS situation. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, back up please. Right there, please, thank you. The financial information here for Cook County includes the pay adjustment that you're considering. It's approximately a ten to twelve percent pay range adjustment across the DDA positions. Ultimately, you know, we've pulled data on the information we could get from fifteen counties that were responsive. And from these, what we find is in every category, the county, from a competitive standpoint, is paying above the average. On the DDA ones, uh, we have pretty much the most competitive salary range, it is, uh, above Deschutes County for that particular position. And then on the DDA two and DDA three positions, we're within ten percent of the men and max for the, for those positions. Next slide, please. With respect to workload. And I'm not arguing whatsoever that the DDAs aren't worked very hard. I'm not arguing that, and in fact, you know, everything I'm hearing is this a statewide issue? And that the statewide judicial system has a number of challenges, this being certainly one of them. But this is just to give you a relative fix on the cases that are coming out of the statewide system. It's all comparing apples to apples. And certainly, it's there to provide context in every different community that you would go to, you have different information that could be expanded on. This is again, a high-level overview. But what this is showing is with the DDA that are authorized, uh, the staff, you know, which is the largest per thousand population, which show in the next slide. We are in the lowest quartile of the comparable workload to these other counties, you know, fully, you know, fully staffed. When we are at the staffing levels we are now, it takes us to get to those three DDAs where we are just slightly above the average. Next slide, please. The competitive work environment or competitive recruiting environment, this is showing the different positions across these authorized positions. In these counties shows the number of vacancies, the vacancy percentage and the FTE per thousand. And you can see here that, you know, Cook County is the highest on a per thousand basis at point two-three DDAs. The average for these is point one-three. Uh, when we look at the vacancy rate, right now, we're seventeen percent, you know, with another DDA leaving, you know, that number would go up to thirty-three. The totals are, we're at, the average is twenty-three percent. So again, this is not just an issue in Cook County, it's an issue across, across the state. Uh, next slide, please. So in summary, we've, the county board has provided a very competitive salary, particularly with the DDA ones. It has provided staffing that is above the averages and above all others as relates to authorization in terms of, you know, those fifteen counties that we looked at per thousand population. We've taken action to improve the 401K and compensation. And you have a world-class facility that will be opening here in a few months where the DDAs to work in. You know, you know, I've, you know, spent a lot of time on this issue, consulted with Mike Meyer, he's retired county administrator for Deschutes County. Larry Patterson, former city manager, have been with several attorney friends, uh, that have no passion to this issue, just providing me input, guidance and so forth. And, you know, at the end of the day, it would be irresponsible of me to not communicate all this information to you, and I understand fully Carrie's passion to this. And fully understand that. I mean, it's, it's a difficult spot to be in and we're trying everything we can to help with that. With respect to the issues of me holding up any recruitment, uh, there's no effort there whatsoever. In fact, I think our HR staff have been very responsive to, to her requests. Uh, her requests come in different forms and in different directions. And the staff is, I think, met with her and has frequently met with her to go over and make sure that those items that she's wanting posted are posted, they're posted timely and in the correct locations. With respect to allegations of retaliation, secret meetings, I don't schedule any executive sessions and, you know, uh, that don't have your approval and aren't posted and aren't discussed at the department head meeting in terms of what those are. And those are meetings that we have. And I think the last meeting that I think she may be referring to, when this particular issue came up on a completely unrelated issue that I was excluded from, where you were all talking about, uh, my contract, and you were also talking about, uh, you know, it came up in PERS out of that meeting. And apparently there was a commitment from you to have Carrie involved, I was unaware of that. Ultimately, we came out of that meeting and you made an action to go ahead and, uh, unenroll the DDAs. Then when I took that information to Carrie, she mentioned that the, the meeting wasn't publicly noticed and so forth, so on. And I shared with her at that time, I will talk with you and we will undo that action and go through the proper steps so that we're not running afoul of publicly noticing things. So there's been no retaliation, it's been acceptance of, you know, that feedback and criticism which was legitimate. And we've ultimately gone back to publicly go through this whole process to make the information available to you and the public as well. As far as advising finance to place employees back on 401K. Yeah, we talked about that and ultimately, whether you, if you choose to unenroll them, the 401K is ultimately going to stay with, you know, the county will have to pay. If we had not made those contributions, we would ultimately have to go back in and pay those together with any earnings on those. So the decision was go ahead and put them in place. With respect to the PERS contributions, we can enroll, if we do unenroll, those contributions would be fully refunded. If you stay in PERS and choose to do that, my suggestion is, is you would, you know, leave the 401K dollars alone and discontinue future, future payments. So all that being said, you know, it's, I mean, that's a huge issue for the county, uh, in a lot of different ways. But given, you know, Cook County's policy decision on Oregon PERS, that is a longstanding policy, the significant financial impact to the county to enroll its DDAs into PERS for a relatively minor increase in benefits, and the potential risk of significant additional costs to the county overall that result in staff and service level reductions if those should come to, come to be. I recommend that the county court or county board do not enroll or to unenroll the DDAs and no PERS to evaluate equal to or better plan options and other retirement benefit alternatives with all county employees. And incrementally fund improvements to those retirement plans and end or other benefits to provide an equal to or better uh, plan that meets the preferences of county employees or other retirement benefits that are not aimed at meeting the ETOLB equal to or better requirements that are more or desired more by employees. In other words, the equal to or better to, PERS does a scoring and it's got to be consistent or like their plan. Employees may very well not want to go and be equal to or better, even though it costs a significant amount less. They may very well want more money into a 401K, more money into health coverage, more money into life insurance. It's all part of total compensation with PERS, it's a one-size-fits-all and you're stuck with it. And as we've, you know, spoke before, fourteen point three percent of your rate of the thirty percent rate isn't going to pay benefits for the employees that are paying that. It's going to pay for previous benefits, the unfunded liability that existed due to the challenges and the mistakes that have been made by PERS through the legislative process. With that, uh, there's also, you know, if you choose to go and fund this, which is again, your decision. I think if you do that, we'll need to, in the budgeting process, consider whether we have a hiring freeze. And at least in targeted areas, do we look at attrition, uh, in terms of not filling positions? Because at the end of the day, if we were to have an additional expense of one point five to one point eight million dollars, you're looking at fifteen to eighteen positions that would not be able to be sustained. And again, this would be money that is retroactive, not going forward. So if you end up with a decision, say, three years from now, and three or four years worth of back payments, you're talking five million dollars. If you have no money to go do that, you would need to go to your reserves, the capital asset fund, which you have the funds to do that presently. Uh, but then going forward, you would then be facing an immediate situation with, uh, you know, staffing curtailment and so forth. So again, there's significant policy issues with this. I mean, again, fully empathize with, uh, DA's situation, and if there are other ways, we are fully capable and agreeable to find ways to provide benefits, including bonus pay, other items that would help recruit and retain the chief deputy and other deputy DA positions in that, in that department. Glad to address any questions you have.
So a couple of things to point out, first of all, that, uh, pay range that was up on the board is not the current pay range, um, and scale of, that I'm authorized to use when I pay, uh, people in my office, that's not the, the range of, of, um, pay, uh, which is on the county's, uh, website, which we're authorized of, of the steps that we currently have in place. So presumably those numbers are, uh, something that Andy is planning for the future, I have no idea, but it's not where we're currently at. Um, secondly, those who know me know I'm a very fiscally conservative person. Um, I will make every attempts to save this county money, I work on that with training, I've tried to figure out free training, uh, working on bringing in grants, I've done that. Um, the, and I continue to explore the options for future grants. Um, I am not interested in wasting money, but people don't work for free. And you have to be able to recruit and you have to be able to retain. Um, previously last year, um, Andy found, um, and utilized a recruiting company, um, that, they were very, very nice. Um, and the discussion has occurred about, do we look for another recruiting company? But here's the thing, they didn't find one single lateral prosecutor. I've been a prosecutor for about twenty years now, I know a lot of people, I reach out to other counties, I reach out to other prosecutors, I hear people say that they want to move to central Oregon, they love it here, they'd love to work with me, I'm not tooting my own horn here. Um, but what they say when they find out that this is a non-PERS county is the conversation's over. They're not going to give up their years accrued into their retirement benefits to, to lateral over to this county. You haven't had a single lateral prosecutor application in the entire time that I have worked here, nor do I think you historically have. We're not getting those people, what we're getting is law students, if we get anybody. So this is a real issue that can't just wait for five years, that just can't wait, we need to put prosecutors in now. And as I indicated to you, I think that you've been provided the information about what the legislative intent is, you've been provided multiple legal opinions here. My legal opinion is that it does not put the county at risk of those one point five, one point eight, the numbers move. Uh, it does not put the county at risk of that. Currently in our fiscal budget, it's not going to increase this year's budget at all. More do I think with our current staffing levels that is going to increase next year's budget. If I was fully staffed and every single person had been that was eligible, had reached their six-month mark, I think there's going to be a nominal increase. Maybe a hundred thousand. When you counter, what does, what is the cost to this community to not have prosecutors? I'm telling you, that's higher, much, much higher. You have experts sitting in this room, experts in law enforcement, the sheriff, I think, is still sitting behind me. We're telling you, ask him, they can't do anything if they don't have prosecutors prosecute those cases. Can't tell you how many times people are lined up outside my door, wanting legal advice, needing help with a search warrant, needing help with an investigation. If the lights are dark, what happens? So we can talk about numbers here, I'm not out here to bankrupt the county, I'm telling you that we're in an emergency situation and we need you to do something about it. I'm telling you that the scare tactics that have been used here are not accurate. You've heard the legal analysis, you've been provided the legislative history. Um, early on, I attached the legislative intent, uh, when this bill was proposed. Um, and my legal advice to you today is that we need to act now and we need to enroll the DDAs into PERS.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and, and I'm very concerned about Andy's input because I think Andy does a really good job of making things come out the way he would like them to come out, and I've seen that time and time again. And, um, I, it's just super concerning to me, and which is why it's so important that we have the conversation we have after this. Because I think that when you talk to the employees, they constantly feel pressured to follow exactly what he says, or that they're not, that they will be in serious trouble if they don't move forward with exactly what he says. Uh, I've heard that on time and time again, I've, just like the district attorney, I've heard that he did go around to multiple departments bagging on PERS and, and dragging her through the mud as well as the idea of doing this instead of what I believe we could, as an organization, find a direction to go. I think when it doesn't agree with what Andy likes, that Andy, uh, weaponizes his words to get what he wants the outcome, not with what the court is pushing forward, and I've heard that on a lot of different occasions. So, you have to say something, John?
Can you hear him back there, Doc? Can you hear him back there, Doc? Wonder, no wonder she turned me off. I'm, uh, I'm John Gotteney, uh, the sheriff of Creek County, elected by the people of this county, as is your DA, it was. Um, we were elected, uh, not just because we were popular or any of that. It was because we are experts and professionals in law enforcement. We don't just get elected because we're a pretty face or whatever. It's because we have state mandates that require us to meet certain training requirements and certain experience levels in order to. Even apply to run for a office. And our job is to advise you on. Information that is important for the safety and security of this community and the people who live here, people who put us all in office. And that's what we're trying to do. Over the last year, we've talked about the needs for improving the law enforcement infrastructure in this county. You guys have come through, you've done very good job at providing the information and help for the sheriff's office to move forward with personnel. For vehicles and so forth. That's very much appreciated. But we can operate in a vacuum. We are a team, law enforcement on the street, as well as our prosecutors in the courthouse. Just like Carrie just said, anytime that our deputies have to get a search warrant. To go and serve on whatever reason. We have to go through the DA's office to get that search warrant reviewed and approved before a judge will even look at it. So that takes up a lot of time. Many search warrants are multiple pages, forty pages sometimes. That takes a lot of time. But my other point is. We've talked about over the years of. A problem we have are retaining employees and, and attracting quality employees in this county. And I think we're on the step of moving forward with improving that. But she has five deputy DA positions allocated her office. She only has three there right now. To reduce that even farther is. I can't comprehend why we would even do that. Because we are right now, her, her office is in a crisis situation. The same situation the sheriff's office was a few months ago, when we came to you and told you, we cannot recruit staff. We can't bring people on because of, of where we're at salary wise and so forth. You stepped up and fixed that problem or in the process of fixing it. But we're in the same situation with the DA's office, not, I don't know what their salary situation is, but. We have five. What's the impact? Of putting them into purse? I understand up to a hundred thousand dollars. And I understand also, based on the information I've heard, that you're not required as a county to do so. But is it the right thing to do? Because every time you lose a, a, a deputy DA. And you try to recruit one, it's like when we try to recruit a deputy sheriff. You're putting out thousands of dollars to bring that person on board and to train them and to get them to where they can actually prosecute felony cases. This is a quality of life for our community. I've lived here a lot of years. I'm dedicated to this community. My heart is here. My family is here. My kids went to school here. I have a hundred percent buy-in of what happens to the community. And to not have the appropriate services for criminal justice. Is a disgrace to the community and you're not going to attract. People to come here who want to live, our businesses who want to come here and do their business for this community. All I'm saying is. You can be right and still be wrong. But we need the DA's office and we need them to be fully staffed and functional. Thanks.
What, what would you be able to recruit? The, your law enforcement agency folks, if you didn't have them in purse?
Every state or every agency in the state, I believe, in law enforcement is in purse. Now, I'm not, I'm not an attorney. I don't even pretend to practice as one or even pretend to be one. But. In that, in that bill that passed, twenty fifty-four. It says that they, the deputy district attorneys are designated as police and fire. It's right in the, right in there. And it says that they can be included as that category. But it did not say general service employees can be considered police and fire. So, but police and fire are required. But if I didn't have that here, it wouldn't be getting any applicants at all. That's, that's what your question was, I think. Yeah.
I have, this isn't a question. I have two comments. First of all, Andy, I feel you have treated Carrie very shabbily and it started out when you stole emails. And I realize they were on a county computer, but that was wrong. And if it wasn't wrong criminally, it was wrong morally. So, and I know you have a prejudice against purse. And you have amply shown that. My second comment is to Eric. I rescinded the motion on the original thing and we asked for a second opinion. And evidently you put it out, we had some trouble and now we have this guy for whatever he's costing. Have we gotten that second opinion?
So what you have in front of you.
Okay.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Perfect.
What you have in front of you is the engagement letter.
Which I saw. So that is all we have is the engagement letter.
Right. Um, their question to us is, do we want to just operate under the existing engagement letter with his firm? And my suggestion was, no, let's have a second engagement letter specific for this, uh, inquiry. So. Um, I have. I saw that this, uh, matter was on the agenda and I did not want to tell him to start working unless the county court, or excuse me, the board of commissioners. Affirmatively said, yes, we want to engage this.
Okay. And that was my impression after reading this, but I wanted it to be set out and open that this is where we're at.
Mm-hmm.
So following the instruction that was previously given, this is our engagement for this second opinion. My another question is, so we'd go ahead and do this. What, what would be the timeframe?
That's a good question.
I know you can't.
Yes.
But I mean, you have a guesstimate and this is, I know is a guesstimate.
I do not have a guesstimate. It's going to take how long it's going to take. Um, I suspect. That they have already started doing some preliminary research, just to wrap their head around this project. That would be very common. Or firm of this caliber to sort of understand, do they even want to approach this question? But if they have done that, we have not received a bill for it, which is entirely appropriate. So how long is it going to take? I don't know. I can emphasize to them, if the board of commissioners chooses to sign the engagement letter. That the county would like the answer sooner rather than later, but it's going to take however long it takes.
Okay. My next question is, what was your opinion of the firm that, that Eric had sought out, Carrie? Cause this is, I'm just following in our progression of what we decided to do. And that's what I'm kind of asking.
Turned me off. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you two are turning each other on and off. I don't know if that's good or bad.
Uh, I, I think my opinion is that you have sufficient opinions before you. That, uh, particularly at nine hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour. I think there's sufficient information before the commissioners to make a decision. Um, my secondary opinion is that, uh, whether it's. A week, a month or more, we have. Laura's last day is May seventeenth. We have to get recruiting out there and we need to be able to recruit now. Uh, we needed to have been able to recruit last week, the week before. So waiting even longer. Makes it worse, um, in our office, clearly. Um, and I think that there's sufficient information between what you've heard. Both from purse, um, Ms. Olney, from myself, from. Uh, Haring Long, from all of the people involved. I think that the court has, this has been hashed out. Um, significantly. And I think at this point, it's time. I would propose it's time to make a decision and move forward.
Excuse me, I'll talk as long as I can until I lose my voice. I was raised here. My mom was born here. She was raised here. My grandfather was here. My great grandfather was here in eighteen ninety-four. I have, I have to the community. I started law enforcement, so I'm familiar with the stress and the, and the things that you're all going through. I mean, I understand it one hundred percent. I work with all the district attorneys. I understand you and I work and what importantly, and also for the community. What, what about it? And so this is turning into such a. Sure, as it's turned into, because that's not what is really here and what's going on. And I respect you all and I respect everything that you do. Service. I worked ten years in a volunteer, putting hundreds and hundreds of hours. Long detrained, long of the after, I can evaluate you, I can read your heart rates, I can keep you alive. And I started it was a scope and one. And my family progressed. And I worked until I had the decision. Do I continue with all the information and my other adventures and things I like to do? Because I'm a workaholic, I'm a workaholic. And this is why I, I can't, because feeling depends on. Preparation. And so I quit the volunteer ten years. I know I'm losing for my ten years. But the last eighteen years, I went to the hospital, I worked on the hospital board. And I worked my way to change until I was on the chair. I worked trying to survive in the hospital. I was born in St. Charles, coming in. And, you know, I was part of giving designation where the federal government can kind of mess things up occasionally. And where we don't have anything, and they had to secure that, to eliminate your total reimbursement for Medicare, Medicare expenses. So. You know, and, and I know, but John, you know, he needs compassion and. And in this county, and we're doing what we can for it. And we have helped the sheriff's department. I believe we have helped a lot of departments in the last eighteen months. And we don't, of course not, we have a lot more to go. But we're trying to do something for the district attorney, to let recite going into purse. And the decision to make, I have. From three different people, but the one that speaks in my mind is the one that says, don't do this. Because we have a potential liability for the county. And if I was in the issues, maybe I wouldn't consider that one as important, but I do because. It's my, my job is to hold county. It's the sheriff's department, it's the district attorney, it's the health department, assessor's office. I mean, it's my job. Is administration of the county. And this is what I'm trying to do and this is how I'm going to base my decisions. But what I would like to say is, I have a hundred percent for trying to get the 401K up for everybody on the county. I don't know, I'd really raise for the people that work here and we're retiring it for them. But I am not a fan of purse either. I think that we can do better. You know, one of the reasons is that people don't stay. And I think it's important that we do exit interviews. We find out, I think that. Everybody's handling it because of the data that he gave us. I appreciate the data because I don't make a decision. I don't have all the information I can, so I can make my decision. Well, my voice is about gone, so I'll leave it at that.
Oh, I don't know what to do because like I say, we made a thing to go ahead and do a, a second attorney. I do trust Carrie. I do trust John. I do not like the treatment that you've received and I feel it has been prejudicial. I am not denying that at all. I'm just in a calamity of, do we go forth and wait? Or do we just go ahead? And I'm, I'm. Very unsure of that, just because that was our path. We heard Aaron Landau, we voted. To get a second opinion. We haven't had that second opinion. I wish we did. I wish we wouldn't have had such a difficulty getting that. So that is my. Kind of business, kind of, that's my question in my soul, basically, right now. Not that I don't, I do trust you implicitly. If I ever murder someone, I hope that you'd come over to my side. But I don't think I'm going to do that. But anyway, but yes, I, so that's my calamity right now. We had a path. We agreed to follow that path. And should we follow? And I do agree with your recruiting and all of that, I do. But I'm not sure, should we complete the path that we started on? And I, I understand where you're coming from. I totally do. And again, I don't feel that you've been treated justly.
Go along those lines. If we did move forward in that direction, do you? Are you okay with that attorney or do you prefer?
Sorry, get too close, get too far. I was just trying to help you out.
I don't, I don't have any information about that attorney, one way or the other. We talked to Ridge. There've been a number of attorneys that were discussed. We talked about Tedesco. Um, I understand that Eric had an issue with him. Um, I think we talked about, um, Andrew Campbell, who I think, uh, does. Uh, legal services in, in this realm. I don't know him. Um, but, um, so.
I know this affects your recruiting. I do know that. That's why I'm trying to get a guesstimate, because like I say, we started a path. And I hate to stop that path. And I do understand the liability and I do care about every employee. So that's kind of my. Unease, but I do trust you, Carrie. I'm not saying I don't.
So do you want to vet this person and then?
Rather get moving. We're at a time as of the essence, so.
I, I, but it, it doesn't sound like that's the direction we're headed, right? And so if, if, if we aren't going in that direction, then I think it's best that you are comfortable with. As possible with the person that we're talking to and going down that route, right? I mean, you, you can't. You do what you get and you move forward and you, you do that the best you can. So. What it sounds to me like is we're heading to the position to have a second opinion. And, but I want to make sure you are.
Timeline from that person, so we know what we're talking about.
And, and I agree with you. That's why I say I'd like to know by next week. I don't want to put it off. Is there a possibility of that if we sign today? Again, we had a path, we agreed on that path. Brian agreed, you agreed, I agreed. I'm trying to get us together and maybe we won't. Maybe I want everyone to have a cupcake and they're not going to get the cupcake, but. I'm wondering if we could somehow at that kind of money, get an advanced answer. And I know, I know you can't. I know that's a tough question.
So I think it would be entirely appropriate to, um, if the decision is to engage the firm. To emphasize that there is a keen interest in getting the correct answer. In a timely manner. So we can ask, now. The attorney is not going to want to rush to an answer if it turns out to be wrong. So we can say, this is a high priority, please burn the midnight oil. To get us an answer by, let's say, a week. That's what I think I heard. Um, but if the attorney says, well, we are running down the rabbit hole and we don't have an answer that we feel comfortable providing yet. That is a possibility. Another possibility is they would say, well, this is actually a simpler question, um, than that. And a week would not be a challenge. Don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I under, it's not even fair to ask that of me, really.
So, but I, but here's my question though, because if we are going to go down this path and we are spending this money. I, I want to make sure that you are comfortable with the person that we're going with. And so that, that would be, I think.
Can I let you know by end of day today?
I think that's what I'm saying is I think I, I'm happy to give you a little time. But I totally agree with you that we need to get this decided yesterday as soon as possible. But that being said, if we do go down this path. I want you to have buy-in on this person and say, yes, I, I would be comfortable with their legal opinion. Because I think we're eventually going to have to get to a point where we're, we can't just try a new legal opinion every time we get an answer. And so. This is it. And we need to get this and get this figured out and move on and, and make sure that you have the opportunity. To deal justice in Creek County.
Do we have to have a motion to sign this engagement letter? Because we've already presented it. We've al- already asked for a second opinion. Is this just a, she gives us an answer at the end of the day, we sign it and we're done?
I would recommend. I would recommend for the sake of minutes that there would be a motion, and that way we can memorialize that. Yes, the county wants to engage this firm to provide the answer to these questions.
And it could be signed outside of court at end of day.
So it's a, it's, yes, it's sort of a, a.
Or outside of work session, I guess I should be proper.
Yes, it's a sort of a tricky issue, because what I think I've heard is that uh at least one member of the board. Does not want to sign, and maybe more than one, unless uh the district attorney gives her thumbs up. Uh, so it's a little tricky to say, yes, we want to approve contingent on something else. So if you will give me just a moment, um, I can see if I can craft uh an appropriate motion so that we can memorialize that. There is approval to move forward. Unless something happens. Okay, is that uh an accurate understanding about what the three members of the board are interested in doing?
I guess I need to ask Brian, what is your opinion of us following through on what we decided before? What's your opinion?
Well, you know, everybody has an opinion, but my biggest opinion is that this could be. A hot ball that could be tossed back and forth for a long time, and we really never have. The only answer. And we could hire a lot of attorneys to do it. And ultimately, probably what will make that decision is a black robe that will say this is what the intention of the law was, and this is the way it is. And that means the lawsuit, and I don't want to have a lawsuit. I just want to get the district attorney to where she can have people in her office. And that want to stay there, and with a fair compensation package that draws them there. And I hate spending a lot more money just with attorney opinions, no. Pense, but it's just, you know, it's just a never ending battle, everybody has them. But I will go along if that will help, I don't think it will help. I think once you have, I I don't know, I guess maybe the weight of the scale, the balance of justice, if you have more runway, then you take that decision. Ultimately, that may come back to haunt us. Um, and I guess, is that decision worth? The four people being on purse, when we can come up with something that's got to entice people to come to work here. We have so many things that are against us. Everybody lives in band, I think you live in band, I think we have one person that that's on on your staff that works in Prangal. And it's hard that commute every day. It it, you know, it's just the facts of life. And when something else comes up that's better, they're gone. I don't, and I understand how you want to get, you know, the excellent people that have got a lot of experience, so what I. You know, I always try to surround myself with people that are smarter than me, uh, because I think it helps. But not everyone's doing that capabilities. And are we going to, are we all assured that we're going to bring those people when we go to purse? You know, I I don't know. And and does that balance the scale of 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 what might happen? I don't know. I have a lot of, I don't know, but when I have those, when I'm hesitant to move forward, there's something that could potentially cause a problem. For the next generation and the next generation. Because the taxpayers are tired of paying money. They just want us to do our job, and they want us to quit fighting and having all these shows, I mean, people are disappointed in their performance.
Right, I I've heard that message um as well. I do have, am I off, I'm just not close enough, I think. My recommendation is that you proceed with making a decision without getting another opinion, I think you have those opinions, I think that you have the purse opinion. Um, the letter that was attached that specifically says what you can read for yourselves in the statute, you have my opinion, you have. Uh, um, the the opinion from the the Hartman firm. You know, I think that at this point. We've really beaten a dead horse here, um, we've all, we've been talking about this uh since at least February. Um, so you know my, you know my opinion, you know. I would, I'm the district attorney, I run the office, so I know what it takes to recruit people, I'm the one who's out there contacting people. So I'm telling you what I hear over and over and over, you can ask other people in the community. I welcome you and encourage you to reach out to other attorneys and say, other prosecutors and say, you know, if you're a purse county, are you coming to a non-purse county? They're gonna tell you no. So, you know, we. We've talked about recruitment, we've talked about retention, we've talked about our inability to get uh lateral hires. I will do everything within my human power to keep the lights on in the building, I'm telling you that we're in a crisis situation. And that's all I can do is tell you that, you have to make the decision ultimately where to go from here. And sometimes those decisions are hard and we're not always gonna have the future answers. Um, but this conversation about um. Is a really a red herring of it's gonna bring in all of the county employees, you have enough information before you that you know that that's not. Uh, the reality here, and I think you have enough information to proceed without that.
I'd like to say, because I think you feel that there's some personal things, and there is a little personal. I, I know, and I will agree with you, is that better? You are very conservative, and I appreciate your input and your help that you know with the Justice Center. Because you you don't ask for eight hundred or eighty-six thousand dollar televisions or monitors.
I think I told you to go with the cheaper route for.
Yes, and you have to have all of these type of things, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate working with you, and I hope to continue to work with you. And I will give you, you know, my promise that if, because, you know, if we do a vote, I I'm not gonna vote for that. I'm gonna be upfront, I, but I will tell you that I will do my best to see that we can get the benefits and the pay and get the people to you. That's the promise I can make, and I think that is a bigger promise than the fact that if you're on purse, you're gonna get everybody knocking on your door. But that's everybody has opinion, that's mine. Thanks, Carrie, and I I do appreciate what you do, thank you.
I think Brian answered the question about about the second opinion, so I will. I will uh. Back off of that. We won't, we won't go farther, Eric, so you can quit furiously writing. Because I don't think it's gonna matter.
Okay, I guess entertain a motion, do we have a motion, is this a motion today, or we?
Well. Let me look at something really quick. Can we take a five minute break real quick?
Sorry, Timo.
So I'm I'm disappointed that that happened, because I think, as we can tell today, this was a decision that the administration need to made, need to have made. So, you know, it's all I can say is, um, I go along, you know, I mean, two people wanna do it, I don't, that's fine with that, uh, that's our system. Let's see what happens.
I guess I question your rushing. Uh, you didn't really appear to want to go for a second opinion. So explain to me how this has been rushed since this has been kind of beat to death, that's I guess what I. I tried to 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 do that, but I then I I didn't think you were receptive, so I'm trying to get us on board. Explain to me the term that you rushed.
Well, the terms we rest, we, I mean, all we hear is that I can't hire anybody until we do it. You know, I mean, you have opinions, and just the one opinion saying that this could be devastating for the county. Is is enough for me to think, well, let's let's find other ways to do something. I mean, why take the risk of of that when there are other opportunities for us to do it? Um, it just. I, you know, I feel like it's, you you know, and and with Carrie, it's, I need something today, and I need to get somebody here. And so that puts more pressure on us to, you know, to respect what she's saying and. And and feel bad because it's our fault that we can't get anybody because we're not purse, when I don't feel that way. Um, I I think there's data that shows that that there's other things that we can do.
And I agree with, okay, our company, we went non-union, the reason we went non-union is the 401Ks allowed our employees. More flexibility and more ability to use their 401Ks as a down payment for a house and whatever. I totally am on board with 401Ks, that is not a problem with me. But I do trust Carrie in her opinion of what it takes for her to put a DDA in here. I do understand her caseload, I do understand the increase of lawlessness. And I do think that there's societal pressures for getting DDAs, I don't think Crook County is immune to them. I think it's a statewide problem, might be it's even a national problem, I I agree with all those fundamental. Facts, but she is here, she is our elected official, she's in a crisis, she feels this is pinnacle to her, and there comes a time. When we need to trust the people that elected her and trust her opinion. And that is why I am doing my action, even though I agree with you fundamentally, a 401K would be a better way for you to go. In your future, I, that's my fundamental opinion, and my husband was always, look at your benefits, look at your benefits, don't look at your wage. Look at your benefits, so. That said, yes, I am with Andy on the 401K, and I've told Andy that probably ten to twelve times. But again, you were elected by the people of this county, you have given us your legal opinion, I think you are extremely smart, and I respect you a lot. And that is the basis of my motion today, and I'm sorry we have to disagree. But that's what I'm in.
Yeah, I.
Right, and and you know, I I appreciate your stance, I don't. But I, you know, I'm concerned that you mentioned we have a crisis. Well, you know, we're trying to fix this crisis, do we make a bigger crisis? And that's what I'm looking at. Trying to do some forward thinking and thinking about that, and. You know, when you mentioned the taxpayers, I mean, we haven't had a vote on it to see whether they want to do it, do they realize that? Um, this has the potential to cost them more money, well, probably won't cost them more money because they're not gonna pay more money, but yet it's gonna cost them services. So when they call up to have somebody do something, there's nobody shows up because we don't have enough people. And I've seen, I've been here seven years, and I've seen where people get overworked and they need more people. And if we're gonna take that away to pay for something, um, then then they're going to be more overworked. And then they're gonna leave because why we want to be here and work so hard? And so we we're just starting to, you know, it's just, it's just growing, it's just a snowball that starts small and. By the time it gets to the bottom of the hill, it's huge. And and so I don't want, that that's why I'm against it, and I'll shut up.
So you're saying we should vote on this?
No, I'm saying that we should not be putting this, that's you, you, she made a motion, you seconded.
Yeah.
There was a discussion, and now we're having discussion, and I'm opposed to it, and that's been my discussion, and you guys are for it. Are you straight?
And and I think a big.
Very straight.
I agree with Suzie, I I in general would prefer a 401K, but I think when you look at an industry that. And I think Carrie brought up some really good points of there have been no lateral moves. And if you are in the, with the vast majority of district attorneys are in the in the purse system. And if they're gonna move over and they're either not yet vetted or um already just newly vetted. They're not gonna come to a county that doesn't have provide that, it doesn't, it doesn't matter how enticing you make that, and I I think I've been clear with that from the beginning. And I and I have the similar concerns to to you, Brian, I I I'm very concerned about that. But I again trust Carrie, and I believe that she is not doing this. To get purse, I think she's trying to give us the best information she can to give the citizens of Crook County the best justice possible. to give the citizens of Crook County the best justice possible. And that's, that's where I'm making my decision. So, um, I guess, any more discussion?
Well, I said I would shut up, but I trust Carrie too. It's not a basis of trust. It's a basis of what I think is the evidence that's brought forward and the probable problems that we could have down the road. And, you know, to, if we have PERS, somebody leaves PERS and goes back to private practice, PERS isn't going to do them any good. If we have PERS and they move to another state, PERS isn't going to do them any good. Um, or, and each of these examples, 401ks would benefit them. It would be their money. And, uh, you know, and I'm probably not real wild about PERS because I'm not real wild about some of the things the state does. And, um, some, and, and that's why PERS is so bad right now, because they totally messed it up. And they just keep throwing money at it. So that's all I got.
We all agree with you on that.
And I, yeah, I totally agree. I totally agree with you, Brian. And I feel you bring forth very good points. And yes, this is a, this is a tough one. And again, I am going to go with, uh, my opinion of Carrie and my opinion of John. And, uh, that's where I'm at.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
All right, Susie.
Okay, the next item I am going to postpone for thirty days. And in thirty days, we will go ahead and evaluate this. So I'm not exactly sure my, uh, quite how I hand, do I make a motion? How do I do this? I was the requester. I'm requesting a thirty-day reprieve. So what do I do, Eric? Tell me the legal thing.
Yeah, so I guess I would say that there doesn't have to be a motion to remove it from the agenda. You just have it on the minutes saying that you don't think that it is opportune to discuss this at this time.
And that's exactly what I just said, what you just said.
Okay, anything, uh, administrators report?
Yes, two items. Um, the comp study that we talked about earlier. I think we've, uh, given information to Carrie that she can use in the recruiting process. Those particular levels, pay levels that are pending approval by the county court or county board. That, uh, will be presented to you at next week's meeting. Um, you can take the time. I'll make sure that Vance is available to, uh, talk with each of you, uh, personally. And, you know, address any questions. Certainly, I, Christina, Hannigan, Amy, Albert are available also to address any questions you have related to that, uh, that schedule. Um, last night, attended the city council meeting. The council approved the airport IGA. Well, that's, uh, and I just received it in email, so we've got that signed document. And that's a, a solid collaboration with them and another checkbox off the, off my contract. So thank you for that. That's all I've got.
Anything else? Any other updates?
Um, I was at the COIC executive meeting and for the budget committee, and I think I mentioned this to Brian, I know I mentioned it to Andy. For the budget committee, there is a meeting April twenty-fifth, and it would be one meeting. And then next year, there would be three meetings. And they made a motion to hold a position open for Crook County. Because I had a meeting with Steve Forrester, I, and I didn't have to advertise it. I can appoint who I want. There's no legal ramifications or whatever. So because of a meeting of Steve Forrester, I felt it would be very important because I'm there representing the county, that we had someone representing the city. So Steve Forrester was going to come, uh, forward with a candidate at that time. I will check with everyone, but again, I checked into legality and all of that. So that's just kind of a little side light there.
Uh, only I would say is that things are progressing well at the Justice Center. Um, upper floors is carpeted in and, and painted in tile and, um, working on the courtrooms. Some of the wood didn't match, so we took some of it back down and putting some other up, so. Um, but things are, it's all on the subcontractor, not us. So, but it all looks good. It's coming along. It's going to be a nice facility. It's going to help and certainly the criminal justice system. It's going to be more space and it's nice.
Yeah, um, I just, I'm concerned, you know, I, oh, sorry. Just ongoing concerns about Andy being here. Um, I know Susie was, uh, going to have a conversation about that. Um, I, I think before too long, we've lost numerous department heads and, uh, I think we're just going to see more and more of that until we take care of it. But that's kind of like Brian earlier on one of three, so that's how it goes. Okay, we'll go to executive session.
So some, some, some of these things that these conversations that we've been having about Andy, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about how they're coming out and the possible liability that it can bring to county. So I think that we need to think before we engage our mouths and things that we say. Because, you know, coming after people, saying things about people is, you know, it's not very big that person. So if you have some questions and you want to talk with him, about him, talk with him rather than about him. Because this is how this rumor mill around here goes.
Yeah, no, I've, I've been, had all these conversations with him on a one-on-one basis. And I think it's, that's where I think it's our position to move forward, but yeah. Go real quick, yeah.
And continuing, Mike Irvin, and continuing to talk about it in this meeting, these meetings is a very unprofessional way of handling things. And the perception throughout the county, Brian, you talked about a little bit ago. We're constantly fighting and that is what perpetuates that kind of stuff. It's just unnecessary and unprofessional. Thank you.
Well, I will never stop fighting for the people of Crook County, so. All right. Well, now we are going to executive session. Uh, represent, Crook County Board of Commissioners. Oh, it says here that we do on twelve. Did that get canceled?
Yes, and I want to make a comment.
Oh, okay.
Of this, this reciting of this code.
Well, I think we're not going into executive session. Okay, anybody not want us to adjourn?
Well, I have a comment. I have a quick comment. Executive session last week, there was no motion made. So no one would know what we were talking about. Yet I had three phone calls the day after from citizens who knew exactly what went on. So if we're going to have an executive session, it needs to be an executive session. We're going to, otherwise I, I feel we should just put it on public. And that's just me. And that's just a comment. And that's, I'm done.
Okay, adjourned.